Right, good morning everybody and welcome to this morning's Adults and Community Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee. Before we start, there is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we leave through the rear doors of the council chamber. I welcome councillor Liz Sneath, Executive Support for Adult Care and Public Health, welcome. And Asana Sabori, our Assistant Director of Frailty and Long Term Care, so welcome. And other participants, I will introduce you as we start the agenda item. First off, Emily, can I have apologies please?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. We have received apologies from councillor Kendrick and councillor Whittington and we have councillor Seer as a replacement for councillor Whittington and councillor Skinner as a replacement for councillor Kendrick.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome councillor Paul Skinner and councillor Noisair, welcome. Thank you for substituting. Declaration of Members' Interests, if any members have an interest during the agenda, please let us know. So I go to the minutes of the 24th of May 2023 to confirm the minutes as a true and accurate record. Are we in favour that the minutes are true? And can I have a proposer? Councillor Mike Clark, seconded, Noisair, all in favour? Excellent, thank you. Announcements, I've got one announcement. Mike, sorry.
Thank you Chairman. Regarding the minutes for the last meeting, there's a typo on page nine, I don't know whether they've spotted it. It's on the first line, I've somehow got department gobbledygooked.
Got it. Thank you for that, well spotted. So announcements, care homes, I had the honour and privilege of going round three care homes the other week. I started off at Stamford, then went over to Sleaford and down to Boston. Daycare centres rather. And I have to say that all three were very impressive. The staff involved with all of them in all levels of their job roles was phenomenal. The sort of drive and passion within each team was, and dedication, I couldn't fault, it was really quite inspiring to see everybody and there was John Waters there and the various teams and managers and every, you know, the users were happy, really happy and that shined through that, you know, things were right because they were all happy. I think there was three elements that sort of potentially could be improved upon which was ideally a local, each daycare centre could ideally, ideally this is, would benefit from having a minibus so they could actually go and take people out, pick people up because in reality is is when the schools start in the morning and finish in the afternoon, all our buses and minibuses and taxis get swallowed up involving in school runs and it means that it becomes really quite limited to how and what they can do around that period. The other one would be a much more simplified payment system so that others are welcome without going through a whole assessment process to see if they should be paying or not, if they're happy to pay, let's welcome them in and just make it very easy. And the third element was getting little jobs done without running through a procurement exercise just to say, put a, install a tap outside that needs for watering the flowers and the vegetable gardens that they're growing in these places. But other than that, everything was really good and I believe, Andrew, you went as well to one.
Yes, I've been to the Boston Day Centre and it was the only one I've been to but I was absolutely thrilled with what goes on there. The staff, everyone I met was so enthusiastic, from the managers down to the people that were looking after the clients, everybody was wanting the same thing and the clients themselves, the users of the service were absolutely amazing. They showed me around and I had a go at card making and making garden ornaments and gardening and there was so much going on, it was a hive of activity, a really happy place and the manager of the Boston Day Centre, I won't embarrass her by saying her name, but she was an inspiration and if our staff are all like that, then we're in good hands in our day centres, it was a wonderful place, thank you.
Thank you. Liz, you want to come in?
Thank you, that's all wonderful to hear, thank you both so much, I will feed a lot of that back, particularly the little jobs point, that is just so important, isn't it? Because that sort of thing can make such a difference and if they have to wait a really long time for that, that's something they really need, like an outside tap, I'll pick that up from there, thanks very much.
The transport matter is something I picked up because the coach was waiting at half past two in the afternoon to take people home after what's supposed to be a whole day and it, you know, for respite care for the people that were looking after them at home, I think half past two isn't really the end of the day.
No, it's not long enough.
So if that could be addressed, I think that the people would appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks very much, I will pass these on, thanks very much.
Brilliant, yeah, and they actually do work very well in their local community, getting people to help support with like jobs like painting and all sorts, so yeah, good teamwork all round, so. Okay, so on that, we'll move on to item five on keeping people safe, Lincolnshire Safeguarding Adults Board Preventative Strategy 2023 to 2026. On this, I've got Richard Proctor, Independent Chair, Lincolnshire Safeguarding Adults Board and Linda McDonald, Head of Safeguarding Adult Care and Community Wellbeing. So I welcome you both and we'll let you launch off.
Thank you Chair. What we're going to do today, if it's okay, the plan is that I'll introduce the strategy, I'll talk about some of the kind of building blocks that we've used to establish the strategy and then I'm going to hand over to Linda, who's our prevention subgroup chair, we'll talk about the delivery model and what we're seeking to achieve from the outcomes of what we're doing. For me, it's a really big moment this, in our kind of journey as a safeguarding adults board. Statutory, the CARE Act identifies that strategies for prevention of abuse and neglect are a core responsibility of the safeguarding adults board, but also that local authorities have a duty to promote prevention and secure wellbeing and that's fundamental to the protection of individuals from abuse and neglect. What the strategy does, it builds on the success of the previous strategy, which was introduced in 2020 and that strategy really highlighted the importance of working in partnership and that's very much to promote that collective and individual wellbeing through public protection activities and also targeted interventions. It's quite interesting when I've just heard your kind of reflections of your visits to the day centre and we talk about collective wellbeing, one of the things that we're really striving to do is work with other partnerships and boards and other partners around that collective wellbeing so we can create that environment where our communities can thrive and I think your example of what you've described perhaps just reflects some of that about how we can kind of join into that bigger system that's out there. The previous strategy achieved a lot of great success in several areas, so for example, we have things like safeguarding champions established in provider agencies and they've grown in number and their role is very much about promoting and supporting the understanding of safeguarding. We've also seen a high number of adults with learning disabilities accessing annual health checks, so that may, and there's also now a more informed and consistent approach around to supporting people who may misuse substances through the development of joint policies and procedures, so very much about how we work together as a system and as a partnership. One of the things we're extremely proud of is around the team around the adult initiative and that's, I'm sure that's something that you're all aware of, but that's been really successful in supporting those individuals to complex needs who might not otherwise benefit from the services that we provide. And this work has actually gained national recognition and it has been, it received an award at the National Safeguarding Adults Board Managers and Linda was also identified as a champion in respect to the work that she does around the prevention subgroup and again, that's something we're really, really proud of. So the new strategy, moving on to that, that really builds on the success of the first strategy, at the heart of the strategy are the principles, the six principles of adult safeguarding and a commitment to making safeguarding personal, again, I know it's something that I've been here and spoke about before about making safeguarding personal, but it's such an important key element of what we do, it's about looking at the strengths of the individuals and those around them who may support the work that we need to do to keep people safe, focusing, being very person centred on our approach and that's ensuring that the views and wishes of the person are central to everything that we're doing so that we're trying to work very much in partnership with them, not against them but with them. It clearly states that in Lincolnshire, we will not tolerate abuse, exploitation or neglect and it recognises the importance of working and learning in partnership with organisations, communities, individuals, families and their carers to achieve this. So it's very much that team approach that we must apply. In respect of the governance of the strategy, the prevention subgroup is a multi-agency group responsible for the delivery of the strategy and it reports directly into our executive board, which we held yesterday, so for example, Linda reported yesterday on the progress that we're making around the new strategy and also about how we're kind of closing off the boxes and the work that was required from the previous one. One of the things I've always been extremely keen of as the independent chair of the board is to make sure that our priorities are identified through a solid evidence base and our priorities have been identified through analysis, through the creation of a joint strategic needs assessment and also looking back at the, what we call the SAC or the Safeguard and Adult Collection data. The other area that we also focus on is about learning, so we look at learning from reviews, case reviews, safeguarding adult reviews so that we can bring that learning so that we can prevent those things that happened in the past not happening again in the future. Key to this also is our work with the other boards, we have really, really strong relationships with the other partnerships around in Lincolnshire, so the Safeguarding Children's Partnership, the Domestic Abuse Partnership and the Community Safety Partnership and we work very, very closely together on joint activities and some of the joint priorities that we've been identified, while we'll be monitoring and supporting the development of those, they'll actually be delivered by the most appropriate boards, so for example, like the Community Safety Partnership and the Domestic Abuse Partnership. That way, we can avoid duplication of effort because we don't want to be doubling up on work that we do, but we can keep oversight and seek their support and expertise in delivering what it is that we need to achieve. I'd discuss, I'm now going to hand over to Linda, we'll talk a little bit around the delivery model and then what we'd like to do at the end of that is just open it up for questions if that's okay Chair. Okay Linda?
Thanks Rick. So just in terms of the subgroup, I chair, are we responsible for coordinating?
Can I ask you to get the monitor a bit closer to you, I can't quite hear.
Is that better? So I'm the chair of the subgroup, the prevention subgroup and we're responsible for coordinating the delivery of the prevention strategy and so the way we do that is through pulling together groups for each of the key priorities. So at the last LSAB partnership meeting, we asked for all agencies to nominate people to take part in those task and finish groups, so we're just pulling those groups together. Those groups will then work to develop a one-page plan for each of those key priorities that we've identified and we'll identify a senior responsible officer for those. Those senior responsible officers will come into the prevention subgroup to update on the progress of those against that one-page plan that we pulled together as a task and finish group and then I, as Rick said, will report to, directly to the LSAB exec on the progress of those strategies. So we know that this worked well because we've done it before for the previous strategy and we know that it's an approach that works and we can achieve good success in that partnership. We link very closely with the other boards, so some of those senior responsible officers will be from other boards and they will come and feed into the prevention subgroup and we'll update on that, so we make sure that we're not duplicating work and that we're keeping very closely sighted on the work that's going on in other areas as well so that we can make those links where necessary. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, questions anybody? Mike?
Thank you Chairman. On page seventeen, it lists some of the principles and I'm wondering whether we should add something, that we should use any or all media to promote all of the above because that's, you know, those are interesting and very necessary things in the prevention principles. And similarly on page twenty-one. We talk about the level three prevention and I'm wondering, I assume we would be, if we thought someone was in particular danger or situation, that the police would automatically be involved, but I don't know quite how your strategy works. And on page twenty-six, it mentions about ulcers and I'm wondering whether we give this information to our children's facilities because I visited one the other day and the brand-new facility, but I don't know what, if that is part of their training, where if we're doing it for adults or are we again doing that for children? If you could give me some answers on those, thank you.
Okay, so if, what if it's okay Linda, I'll talk about the principles and then perhaps if you could just fill the bit in around the operational activity. Okay, so the six underpinning principles of the safeguard, adult safeguarding are critical really, as I see it, obviously this is about prevention but also how those other interlink with the work that we need to do. Massively important to this, the delivery of this is partnership, I'm a huge believer that our strength is in partnership and what I see in Lincolnshire is some really, really good partnership working and how we all come together to work together to deal with some of these complex and challenging issues. Obviously, if things escalate and concerns escalate, then obviously appropriate action needs to be taken and that's why we have a three step, like three different approaches in respect of keeping people safe. Obviously, the first one is that around that primary about what can we do, so those kind of common sense kind of prevention activities that could be taken to prevent harm occurring, things like creating that collective wellbeing, feeding people and linking people into where they need that support from, how we can do that. Obviously, that second level then is around perhaps those individuals that we don't feel need to be in an adult protection environment, but they need some support, they may be resistant to coming into services, so it's very much about things like the team around the adult initiative where they would work together as a partnership, we would share information, obviously subject to consent, we'd get that information in, we would look at how do we develop the best plan to kind of support and protect those individuals and then we would perhaps appoint a coordinator, we'd then bring all that work together and then take that action forward. But as you rightly say councillor, the third one is obviously when we feel that it's necessary that those individuals need to come into adult protection and that's where we would obviously, the local authority, that responsibility to carry out that inquiry into that, that nature and obviously Linda would explain where necessary you would call on support from the police if that was felt to be, it was appropriate from a criminal perspective, okay?
So just to pick up the other points you may, first of all, as Rick has said, in relation to the principles, they are the safeguarding principles, they underpin everything we do and we promote them across everything that we do, so they are very widely known and shared. In terms of the police and your question about if anybody was at immediate risk, all of our literature, including our website, the LSAB website, do direct people that if they have a concern and somebody's at immediate risk of harm, they must call 999. So we do direct people in those circumstances to get the most appropriate urgent response if necessary. And in terms of pressure ulcers, we do, so firstly, all providers should have the appropriate level of training in all relevant areas and that includes things like pressure care. In terms of working with childrens and whether things will be available to them that are available to adult care through this process, through this, we, the LSAB work very closely with the LSCP to deliver training and a lot of joint training is developed, but I will certainly take that away and make sure that that is actually put on to the one-page plan so that it is, it's expressly set out that we will do, that will link with childrens to make sure that training's offered across the board.
Thank you, can I come back with another question please Chairman?
Quickly, yeah.
On the financial abuse, you know, it can be going on quite quietly without anybody spotting it, I'm wondering, do we have any connection with the banks locally so that they would alert you if they saw irregular or large payments going out of an elderly person's account because they might be able to spot that far quicker than anybody else?
So we do have referrals from banks into safeguarding, so we know that they know that mechanism and we publicise very widely and we have good links with some of the banks, you know, we'll know my staff and come to them. In terms of some of the work that we have done in the past, we have included banks in that, but certainly it's something that we'd like to do more of in the future is to go out into communities and work with those areas and we wanted to join with the Domestic Abuse Board and do some of that work with them. They've done that outreach to communities in particular, you know, estate agents, hairdressers, you know, those people who might be first people to get an idea that something might not be quite right, but we do have a number of referrals, I mean, sort of things like shopkeepers will contact us, you know, to say that they're slightly worried about something. Pub landlords, very good at contacting us and telling us they're not, you know, they just feel that something's not quite right with somebody. So I think overall safeguarding, the routes into safeguarding are well-known in the community but we don't rest on our laurels, we always continue to try and make sure that everybody knows if they're concerned, where to go and the appropriate route to raise concerns.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Tracy and I've got Andrew.
Thanks Chairman, I've just got five or six little bits, questions or comments. On page seventeen, where you've got the six principles, I'm kind of curious or just raising that I find it strange that accountability is in black, it either makes it stand out or disappear more and I just don't really understand the logic of it even being in black. On page twenty-one, it reads as though for someone to actually have a form of safeguarding duty, that all three of those criteria need to be fulfilled. I would presume it's one rather than all three because surely if someone is experiencing abuse or neglect, that would automatically qualify, but just to make sure on that one. On page, hold on, nearly there, on page twenty-three, for me, the most horrendous thing in the whole of this report is that a third of the issues are actually nursing home, residential homes, where they're actually raised there. I note on page twenty-five of one of your key priorities is that you're going to, I think the word was, encourage safer recruitment, can we not do more than encourage considering people are sending their family members into residential nursing homes, hospital settings and bearing in mind us as county council actually give these contracts to a lot of these providers, surely we should be doing much more than encouraging that correct recruitment and due diligence is taken when people in care, then a third of our inquiries are actually people that we're trusting, so I would like to see that as a collective, not just within safeguarding but as a collective, that we're doing much more than encouraging. On page twenty-four, it's just purely to note that I'm pleased that we are being very transparent with our figures, as I'm sure everyone in this room knows I have such an issue with this KPI. And just one final one, sorry, two final one, on page twenty-six, second but last paragraph, it mentions we will provide information advice to these communities on how to keep them safe, how are we providing that advice, is it a leaflet in the doctors or are we actually going out to people? And then there's quite a few little pieces of analysis that's mentioned, particularly on page twenty-eight, the joint analysis, I know in your presentation you've mentioned it, but there is no timescales, I know it's a policy for twenty-three to twenty-six, but obviously we need to get a lot of this analysis and everything done early doors, so what timescales are we looking at for that? And that's it, thank you.
Just on some of those, I think the way that the figures are laid out causes a bit of, if not careful, if you look at that and it says seventy-three percent of all cases are related to care homes, you'd be like, oh my God, is it that bad? And that's, I don't, personally, I don't think you've got the, you want a pie chart or a chart which basically has what's going on in the sectors to make a hundred percent of the abuse or the whole safeguarding issues because if you're not careful, when you start to look at it, you're either panic and think the care homes and it then flips and you're, and then what you do is you're using percentages within percentages and it gets a right, personally I think it gets a bit untidy, you'd be better just, this is what the focuses are and these are the issues within the focus. We know what the, like, whether it's domestic, financial, but I think there's an element of sort of, you know, if, if like this report says, that nursing homes and care homes are shockingly bad, it actually, I don't think it is as bad as what the report makes out and I think that a pie chart would make it better, what you're doing is you're subduing the percentages within a division and it then makes it look even more when you just read it. Got to remember that people should, in theory, anybody that's abused or anybody in the public can read this and should be able to really understand it quite simply and I don't think it quite does that and I think where Tracy's picking up is on some of those bits of, just gets a bit blurred. Yeah, hi Asana.
Before Linda answers the six points, thank you councillor Carter, in relation to nursing home and care homes, nursing home and care homes are regulated services and CQC is really, really hot on safeguarding issues, they can lose the business and livelihood if they're not complying with the safeguarding guidelines. So when we use the word encourage, I agree, we may need to use a more powerful word, but what we mean is really it's, safeguarding is a partnership, local authority cannot do it on their own, CQC can't do it, Health can't do it, it's a teamwork and in comparison with other local authority, what we have in East Midlands, it's much more, it is better than rest of, for instance, in West Midlands. Having worked in West Midlands for twenty-four years, when I came here, I was pleasantly surprised to see how good, I know we have always room for improvement, but in terms of the partnership working and the service Linda is managing, the measures are very robust. The other thing I wanted to bring to attention of the councillors is about the contract management, we have a brilliant commercial team, the people who are managing the contracts, they have a framework and they do not take in any prisoners and is a part of the contract and performance indicator for the provider is safeguarding, it's one of precious source, especially training and it's been checked regularly. Having said that, as the chairman said, sadly, still we have got issues in nursing and residential homes, but I totally agree with what the statement you made, it's not as bad as it looks like, maybe we need to represent data because good practice also needs to be mentioned, yeah? Thank you.
Okay, we sort of, Tracy?
Thank you very much. Well, I'll just talk a little bit about, obviously, the section forty-two inquiry that we mentioned about the three stages, I'm sure Linda will reply on that one because I know it's something that she's very knowledgeable on, so perhaps she's the best to do that. One of the things I want to speak about where you mentioned One of the things I want to talk about, where you mentioned the advice and information. One of the things we're doing at the moment to support the delivery of everything we do is a co-production and engagement strategy, which we've now got established at the board. And it covers a wide, different number of elements of how we communicate and how we engage with the community. Some of that is about online information, keeping people up to date. But one of our ambitions is very much that we want to get out there more into the community. I'm very keen that we are visible. I don't at times think we are as visible as we should be. So that's really, it's something that I've really pushed on. The other thing also we're looking at is about how do we kind of use better things like experts by experience? So how do we get them to, and we've now got some traction and movement on that now, which is progression, I see, where we've got somebody who can, who's actually part of that kind of situation, can actually look at it and think, well, actually, this is what it really means to somebody like myself living in this situation. So that's how we would engage and continue with that. I think it's really interesting and that's the beauty of these kind of meetings. Because I hadn't really thought of it in the way that you described it, about how it's presented. But I think it's really important that we, because the reality is, is we know people out there, the vast majority of our people out there are trying their very hardest to do a fantastic job to keep people safe. And the last thing that I would want to do as independent chair was to leave an impression that we're in some kind of, you know, it's so catastrophic when that's not what we mean to do and that's not what we mean to say. But we'll take that on board and we can take that back and we can amend that and look at that, because that's not the impression. And we recognise, obviously, the demographics of Lincolnshire and the aging population that we do have. But we have a duty also that we don't want to make them feel that things are actually worse than what they actually are. Because we need people to keep and we know from, like the Ask Off data, one of the things is around people keeping them feeling safe. So I think there are really valuable points which we'll take away. So thank you very much for your comments. Linda, you okay just to talk about?
Thank you. Got Andrew?
Thank you very much. Yes, mine relates to page twenty-six. It's a very straight question, straightforward question. It's on the horrendous figures for pressure sores. And this isn't a new problem. It's been going on for years. And inquests for years will have put in place or suggested action plans to sort this out. So basically, what I want to know is what action plans are there, what has been done? And, you know, this is truly horrendous, this is. I mean, we were talking earlier about not making things worse than what they are. But four hundred and thirteen serious clinical incidents in two years for pressure sores is horrendous. And as I say, it's not a new problem. So what work has already been going on? What action plans are there and what changes have been made? Thank you.
Did you want me to come back to your points first? Is that okay? Do you mind if I just answer those points first? So just in terms of the question that you asked about accountability being, standing out, it's because of the way it was done, it was for accessibility purposes. So because the other text was in white against a different background, it didn't stand out. And so when it went through accessibility, it had to be changed to black so that it was accessible for everybody. So, yeah, and I'm sorry that that stands out. We might have to have a look at that. In terms of the criteria, the criteria come from the CARE Act and it is that each of those criteria have to be met. So it is that a person who has needs for care and support is experiencing or at risk of abuse or neglect and as a result of those care and support needs is unable to safeguard themselves. So it's, and that's sometimes where the confusion lies with safeguarding, because people think a person needs to be safeguarded. But actually, safeguarding applies to people who have needs for care and support and can't safeguard themselves because of them. So I hope that answers that. In terms of the figures, absolutely, you know, appreciate you raising that. And as Rick said, I suppose when we look at it, because we know them so well, that we don't see that. I think just to provide some assurance, part of this is prevention. So this is not around responding to concerns, it's around prevention. And what we do know is that we receive a lot of concerns that actually aren't safeguarding concerns. And you're already well cited on that, they're not safeguarding concerns. But they are an opportunity to intervene early, to make sure that they don't become safeguarding concerns. So we have that information, we have that intelligence and that builds into our prevention strategy so that we can work with those people. And it's about continuous improvement. So if we can make those continuous improvements, if we can look at those things that are concerning our providers and take action now, it will stop them developing into safeguarding concerns at a later date. So I think the figure is about thirty-seven percent at this point went through to inquiry of the concerns that came through from providers. Of those, again, not all of them will find that there was abuse or neglect, but we make those proportionate inquiries. So just to provide some assurance there. And the, sorry, the question that you asked about the work that was being undertaken in terms of pressure care.
Yes, it was the question that this isn't a new problem. And that inquests will have put in place more than suggestions that should have been going on. And basically, what's happened with those suggestions over these years?
So we are aware that colleagues in health are doing a great deal of work at the moment in order to increase people's knowledge and skills around pressure care, to make sure that it's universally recognised, that there are, people are responding early. Very often, the difficulty with pressure concerns is that by the time you can see something, it's already started to develop, there are already issues. So actually, it's about making sure that people are taking preventative action, that they're responding early and that they've got the knowledge and skills to be able to identify and they know the pathways to seek support at the earliest opportunity. In terms of what we're going to do, we're going to link in with health and we're going to make sure that we link in with the work that they're already doing. But we look at how we can upskill people, not just nursing staff, not just provider staff, but actually when we're planning care, you know, so when we're looking at working with people and assessing their needs and planning care, that we're thinking all the time about those things and what they might need in the future to make sure that they don't come to a point where they're at risk of pressure care developing. It's always a risk.
Thank you. I think people misunderstand sometimes what a pressure sore or ulcer is. We have a nurse amongst our councillors here who I'm sure will have seen some horrendous examples. And people don't, the normal members of the public who've not seen one will perhaps not realise how really serious it is and what a huge impact it can make on someone's life or death.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Chairman. It's quite some good stuff in this report, Chairman. Pathways, partners, but for me, page twenty-five, continuous improvement. I'm an engineer by background and constant improvement is something that I look for in all organisations and all things. But the important thing with the quality is getting the quality measured evenly across all those partnership, all those organisations. In fact, indeed, you did briefly go on to that and suggest that we would be training other partners. But obviously, to get the best out of partnerships, it has to go both ways. So that's really one of the questions. And going back to what Hugo picked up on this with the figures and stuff, I've read the whole report and I'm struggling, just, I like to drop things down into simple things. And to me, what does success look like and how do we measure it? Because I can't find that in this report. And I really do think that we need to be putting a bit of effort in there, because we could drift three years and say, ooh, it's going fine. But how do we measure it? How do we know we're getting better? Is it by all these things dropping off, hopefully not literally in some cases? But what we need to be doing is thinking a little bit of what the success looked like and how do we measure it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, yes. And it is something that we are carefully considering. So this is the overarching plan. We'll do a one-page plan for each of them. And within those, what we'll do is, as a group, is identify what those success measures will be. So how will we know that we've made an improvement in this area? And there will be time scales for each of those as well. And then the senior responsible officer will be the person who is accountable for making sure that that group is working together to deliver to those time scales.
Yeah, I mean, what Paul said, I mean, I agree. I mean, if you took, for argument's sake, looking at the medicines in relation to medicine management, we're twenty twenty-three and we're still trying to write governance for how to deal with medicines. I mean, that shouldn't even be on our radar. That should be something that's just, you know, we deal with. I mean, it's like, people have been taking medicines for how long? Hundreds of years. So in theory, there shouldn't really be a need for governance on this. It should be, it's just dealt with. And I think that's where, you know, the success looking at is right. And it comes back to where I was saying about the focus, the priorities and the risk. Because actually, if not careful, you're right, we have to adhere to what the CARE Act says and the points with that. But if we don't watch it, we also need to prioritise really where is the risk? And if people are dying from bed sores, then that's a risk. If actually, you know, and it's scaling risk, isn't it, in the prevention? But Paul, did you want to come back to see?
Yeah, I was going to try and be a little bit more helpful. What you do is to actually put procedures in place. Normally it'd be at three levels and the base level be working practice and improving that working practice with those people. But just a little food for thought. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just on that, it's a bit like anything in modern day. If you took the NHS, there's so much overload with bureaucracy that in the end, we don't do the job of actually caring for people because we're so busy writing the notes up and actually doing everything other than actually what the person wants. But, and it's a bit like, you know, here we are. And most things with the council, we have to look at and really start, because as much as we'd love to do everything, it's just we're under resourced for going down all the time to every bit. But I've got Sarah and then that's...
Thank you, Hugo. Good morning. It's a good number of years since I last read one of these policies for safeguarding adults, having previously actually sat on the subgroup. And I think what I can sense from just a bit of it, things do shift and I'm really interested in the shift. We're talking about making safeguarding personal and we always use the word consent, working with people's consent on their behalf, without necessarily seeing that particular word. Has there been a shift? I can understand that, in fact, we're talking about the same thing in terms of working with people. That difference in dynamic between if we have a child at risk, we absolutely have to act statutorily. And so I'm just interested in how that area has developed after the, over the last two to three years since I last had contact with the board.
Yeah, obviously, it's the kind of golden thread that runs through everything we do as a safeguarding adults board now. And we speak about it all the time, talk about it. And it's very much about where necessary, holding people to account and challenge, and we do that. So it's one of the areas that we capture data on and we measure and we manage and we challenge as well. We have a specific plan that deals with that around the improvement plan. So in the last couple of weeks, I've been working with, for example, Lincolnshire Police. We've now got really good co-working now taking place with the adult safeguarding team and Lincolnshire Police, where they are coming together so they can look at the cases and understand, you know, where and when we should be applying to making safeguarding a personal approach and what's the learning. So that's a really, really positive thing. We're doing some work with East Midlands Ambulance Service as well. Again, you know, we've got to get to that position where people are, where practitioners are seeking an individual's wishes and feelings and where that, because we know, when we mentioned about partnership early, partnership with the individual or the people around that individual are key in IC and the success of keeping people safe. So it runs through everything that we do and it's something that we promote and profess all the time. But it's also something that we check and challenge as well. And we know through the work that we do, so we have a thing called a significant incident review group. I don't know if that was in place when you were as part of the board. But basically, that looks at the notifications, when there may be concerns about how agencies have worked together. And again, that is a key feature around making safeguarding personal, that it's examined and checked. So there's lots of checks and balances in place.
Sarah?
I just think from when I was on the subgroup, that that was probably the hardest balancing act to get right decided, particularly in the area of domestic abuse, is when, or financial abuse, any kind of abuse where you have, where you can see a victim and you know they're there and yet they are not willing themselves to move on. It's incredibly complex and, you know, I think we need to, it's very, I felt this when I was reading it. It's no, I almost don't feel that you've done yourself justice in the report. Because in fact, getting that balance right is so complex, getting the partnerships right. So that potential victims actually feel affirmed and safe and confident in that network around them is really, really difficult. And it's also something that's incredibly difficult to put a KPI and a figure on, because it's dependent on human relationships and human interactions. So it's almost something that's ethereal and really, really hard to grasp and measure. I don't know if that's why it didn't really kind of, I always think the magic of it didn't come across in the report. Because I think it has to be very, it's very council speak, isn't it? And I don't think you've done that justice in how difficult that dynamic is.
Okay, got Karen and then I'll wrap up.
Thanks. I just wanted to say, I think the detail of this report is absolutely exemplary. It's a really good report and I'm absolutely convinced that you're doing your best in very difficult times. I think for me, one of the things that strikes me, the first thing when someone doesn't feel well or whatever, or something's wrong, one of the first ports I call used to be your GP, didn't it, your local GP? And it's horrendously difficult to get to a GP these days. I've just swapped. I used to go to one in town. I'd been going there for twenty-five years and I moved five years ago. And I finally decided to swap GPs. And it's just as difficult to get an appointment there. Initially, you have to have an online consultation. And I'm sure there must be a different way if you're eighty and you can't do online. But I just think it's fraught with difficulties and it's, you know, it's one of those, I do think that that's a big thing. I do wonder about the pressure damage thing as well. I didn't want to say too much because potentially, you know, I could have an interest. But people don't realise that a stage one pressure damage is just a little tiny break in the skin. It's not some massive crater that they're the ones that would come, you know, under a safeguarding remit. And I don't know out of that four hundred and thirteen, how many were really serious pressure damage and how many were just the sort of thing that unfortunately you see all the time in hospital. And you see it because people are compromised in all kinds of ways and it happens. And you could move them every five minutes and it would still happen. But there's a heck of a lot of documentation that goes on in hospitals to make sure. People have to have two hourly turns and you have to write and sign to say you've done it. And actually, there is still a huge amount of caring that goes on. And nurses like me, it's not that the work doesn't get done. The truth is that we stay behind for half an hour after our shift ends to then do the writing. We do a heck of a lot of caring and we have to, we just do the writing for free a lot of the time. And unfortunately, that's how it is. Thank you.
Okay, I'll wrap up. I think there's one sort of note of caution that I throw in is making safeguarding personal. I'm all for that, but always remember there's two sides to a story. And actually, it's very easy to make safeguarding personal at the expense of not looking at the bigger picture. And by that, everybody else that is perhaps not involved can then become guilty. And or in a sense, the big picture is missed. And actually, you're so busy making it personal for somebody that actually what the family members were saying was perhaps something quite different. And I think that's just a word of caution. We basically have got to the point now where we are so focused on that one person that we miss sometimes what really is actually happening, what instigated, what happened, what's going on. And I think, you know, it's just a sort of a... What instigated, what happened, what's going on? And I think, you know, it's just a sort of a caution. I believe, I don't know whether you're back, in September, we have on our next item agenda. And I know Justin's taken a bit of a lead on it, but it is a sort of, an update just on the activities of adult safeguarding. But I think another area that perhaps just wants looking into is the sort of potential suicides as well. What is, why has suicides now got to the level it's got to? And how safe are the people that we're looking after from the risk of them in suicides? Because suicide rates is apparently, for under, males under 40 now is more than car accidents and every other things that put together. So I think we need to just make sure that on that side, we are doing our bit and making sure that we are, like you say, it's a complicated world out there in safeguarding. It's perhaps the most complicated of all the things. But I think sometimes if we're not careful, some of our partners skip through things a bit too quick and actually it leads to a bigger mess. And we just need to make sure that in our approach to safeguarding, we're not actually making sort of perhaps decisions which we think are right but might not actually be right. And having worked with people with dementia and things, it's so complicated at times that, you know, it's, you know, it just, little things can instigate by a person just actually really when there's nothing really related to it. And then other times, then there are major things related to it. So, but it's a start again and we'll follow it through. And I think it's like you said, it's a continuous learning exercise. You know, the more we get feedback from people and those that have been affected and we can only from that learn on how to actually strive forward all the time with it. And it is a constant evolving process. So well done. Thank you very much. And we'll see whoever in September on it. Okay, item six, substance misuse recommissioning. So we've got Lucy Gavin, Carl Miller and Simon Gladwin to take the lead on this one. This one is for the comments to the executive for Tuesday. So we will summarise those up, or Simon will, and then at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I will start us off and talk through kind of an overview of the proposals that we've got together. And then Carl will come in towards the end and talk through some of the commercial aspects of the proposal. Drug and alcohol misuse leads to a wide range of, of health, of social and economic challenges for the individual user, for their friends and family and for wider society. And our substance misuse services, they're a specialist service that is there to support people with problem drug or alcohol use. They're commissioned at a local level. So we commission for, for the whole of Lincolnshire. And they're there to support people to reduce or stop their use, to remain drug or alcohol free and also to provide specialist support to the friends and family of people with drug or alcohol, problem drug or alcohol use. And the substance misuse service enables us to, enables public health to fulfil its statutory duties for, for health protection, for health improvement and for care. And our specialist services are a really important part of, and a really important partner in the prevention of drug and alcohol related harm as well. So we, all of our current contracts for treatment, for recovery and for family support expire on the 31st of March 2024. And because of that, we've been doing some review work for the last 18 months to understand how, how the current service has been performing, what the best evidence is around what a service should look like, looking to other parts of the country to do benchmarking work and, and lots of other activity that forms part of our recommissioning process. So I've mentioned that we, we currently do commissioned services. So at the moment, we have a treatment contract provided by We Are With You, which delivers drug and alcohol treatment to children and adults, to young people and adults. That reaches over 3,200 service users a year at the moment. And each person using that service will have a tailored recovery package. The treatment service is flexible. So there are, you can access the service in many different locations across the county, so local hubs, community centres and outreach services to, to support people kind of as, as close to home in the most, in the most convenient place that we can for them. And for young people, we've got a separate front door to that treatment service, as well as a school's prevention service, which is currently commissioned separately. And that supports education around substances, various substances and the harms they pose. And young people within the service are seen again in a variety of locations. So sometimes in schools or in community venues or in their own home. So we also have our recovery service at the moment, which is provided by Double Impact. And that service delivers a range of groups and it's designed to connect people to a recovery network and help them to, to remain drug or alcohol free and to have kind of sustained and fulfilled recovery. It works with people primarily at the end of their clinical treatment and those that are abstinent from, from substances. And then just finally, the family support element is all about, is currently delivered by Lincolnshire Action Trust and it's about supporting people, supporting family to cope with the impact of drug or alcohol misuse in the family. And there are again, a range of interventions that that provides around information and advice, signposting to other services and referrals to related support, as well as peer support. And it offers individual support as well as taking a family approach. And together, those substance misuse treatment, recovery and family support services are really important components of our system-wide prevention and treatment of drug and alcohol related harm. So in preparation for our recommissioning exercise, we've done quite a bit of pre-procurement work, as I mentioned. And this has been about understanding the performance of the current model, identifying best practice from elsewhere, from across the country, and exploring alternative commissioning models for the new service. And conclusions from all of that work in the round have informed the future delivery model that we're proposing to the executive. Whilst the current model has generally performed well, this recommissioning offers us an opportunity to apply everything we've learnt over the last six years to make sure that as we move forward with the new service, that we are making the most of our learning and the latest evidence around substance misuse, treatment, recovery and family support. So there are some improvements that we're looking to make within the new contract. Things like, there's a full list within the paper, but it's things like increasing the web-based digital information offer for both service users themselves and their families as a first point of contact. And also to make sure that there's really high quality self-service information for people that want to go in and look for some information, as well as being able to access kind of individualised support through the services. There will be, as there is currently, a distinct identity for children and young people, but also for other service users based on particular cohorts who we know can be more vulnerable. So women, for example, people in recovery. And we work closely with partners, particularly around some of the, the areas where we've got kind of strong alignment and we know there's, there's greater need. So for example, particularly women and girls across Lincolnshire is one of the areas of work that we're prioritising at the moment with some additional national grant funding, but within the new service as well. There'll be a much stronger embedding of prevention within the treatment service. So for example, our Stay Safe offer to schools is going to be as part of the core treatment and recovery contract to help us to increase the sustainability of the offer and build it up over time. Because prevention is so important to prevent people from needing the service in the future. We also work really closely with key partners, so probation, the Integrated Care Board, the police, colleagues across, safeguarding team colleagues across multiple organisations in Lincolnshire to support people who have more complex needs. So as an example, one area where we've got quite a bit of work happening is what we call dual diagnosis. So where an individual has a co-occurring serious mental illness and substance misuse problem, we are putting in place specialist support, even more specialist support, if you like, to support those individuals who often really struggle to access mental health or substance misuse treatment, let alone concurrently. And then just finally, in terms of the, the kind of progression, we are integrating the treatment and recovery services within this new contract to make recovery more visible within treatment. And what we expect from that and what kind of the evidence has told us has worked well elsewhere, is that that can support service users to build resilience and to prevent relapse. The timing of our recommissioning is, is good in that at the back end of 2021, the national government released a new strategy from, from Harm to Hope. And we also have some additional supplemental grant funding linked to that strategy, which we've been able to build into the, the new service that we're recommissioning. And just finally, before I hand over to Carl, so the proposed budget for the new service is 5.472 million from the Public Health Grant. And that's built into our Public Health Medium Term Financial Plan. Additionally, as I've just mentioned, the service is supported by some national supplemental grant funding. And that's been key to the continuous improvement of the service. We have been in receipt of the funding for the last couple of, some of the, a portion of the funding for the last couple of years. But it has increased over time in terms of the value of that national grant funding. The funding for 2324, so the current financial year is one point, this is the national supplemental grant funding, sorry, for this current financial year is 1.9 million. And for 2425, it will be 2.2 million. Our eligibility for that national grant funding is contingent on us maintaining our public health grant contribution at the level of investment made in 2021, 22. And that's in part why we're proposing to retain the budget for the new service at 5.472 million. So the total budget will be the 5.472 from the Public Health Grant plus the national supplemental grant funding, which for 2425 is 2.2 million. So 7.672 million in total. I'll just hand over to Carl to talk through some of the commercial specifics.
Thanks, Lucy. So yeah, just to summarise the commercial approach, which does take account of the findings of the review work and the identified service model improvements that Lucy's referred to there. The proposal is for, for two contracts covering Lincolnshire's future substance misuse services to be procured through a single tender process split into two lots. So the first lot will represent a contract for a countywide integrated treatment and recovery service that includes drug and alcohol treatment for adults and young people, as well as prevention and recovery elements. And that offers improvements to the current model through the integration of the treatment and recovery elements to maximise efficiencies and flexibility in service delivery. So for example, things like economies of scale through shared infrastructure for IT premises and that sort of thing. And it will also bring a stronger focus on recovery from the onset of treatment, as Lucy mentioned. The second lot will be a contract for a, a separate specialist family support service for adults, children and young people. The separation from the main service will enable focused resources and delivery. And the comparatively smaller scale of that contract will enable the participation of specialist local providers and SMEs in the procurement process. The term proposed for the new contract is an initial period of five years with opportunities to extend by up to a maximum of a further four years. So five plus two plus two, maximum of nine years in total. That will enable the council to extend the service, subject to the availability of funding and subject to positive supply performance at the appropriate extension points. Engagement was supportive of that approach as, as something that was viable and attractive to the market. And, and that market engagement process, of which there's been a lot of activity as we've moved through the recommissioning programme for these services, has also supported some of the key elements of the proposed new model. So things like the need for a variety of delivery channel options, including that well-developed digital offer that Lucy mentioned, to sit alongside other delivery options. So things like remote interventions, the co-located provision of treatment and recovery, the mutual aid or peer support delivery model, all of which will further enhance opportunities for people to receive support in a way that works for them. Also, it highlighted the focus on the need for positive partnership working and integrated care pathways as being key to improving access for underrepresented groups and the need for adaptability in the contracts moving forward to reflect both emerging and changing needs for, for the service user cohort and also in response to national funding uncertainties. So those aspects will all be built in to the new service specification requirements. For the payment mechanism, it is a, a complex service with a fixed core budget set by the council. And as Lucy said, which, a budget which cannot be reduced without impacting the availability of supplementary grant funding moving forward. So payment for the core service will be by way of a fixed sum or block payment. And to ensure that full advantage is taken of the supplemental grant funding, again, recognising the uncertainty regarding the level of that additional funding in future. The specification will set out the core service deliverables with delivery volume and associated price scalability to ensure that the future service has flexibility against the available budget. Included as part of the pricing submission through the tender process, interested providers will be required to submit details of the service volumes and level of outcomes that they propose as achievable within their respective delivery proposals. The contract will include an open book accounting approach as the basis for assessing whether the provider is generating any operating efficiencies, which can then be apportioned via a gain share mechanism, should the actual costs of service delivery be below the tendered service delivery costs. And it's proposed that the contracts will include an inflationary indexation clause to support competition upfront and remove that risk from the providers when they are putting together their proposals during the tender process. And, and then lastly, just to touch on performance monitoring for the new service, that will be driven by service user outcome measures based on industry standards, as well as the tidiness of service interventions to support risk mitigation for individuals in the service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Trevor?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we've, we've spoken this several times, haven't we? Come to committee several times. And Lucy, I'll echo in terms of what I said previous that, I think in terms of the, the contract, £5 million sounds a lot of money. And it feels as though, you know, you should be able to deliver a lot of services in terms of £5 million. But what it feels to me, and I've said this previous, is that what we deliver into across the county is a very discreet service. It has to be discreet. I've worked in the NHS for 38 years. I've represented, been a councillor for 20, since 1995. And if I was perfectly honest, I would still struggle to be able to signpost people to services around substance misuse, alcohol services, et cetera. And the, the fact that it is a discreet service, I think is an issue. It should really be, you know, it should be out there openly in the face of people and people are bound to actually know where that service is and be able to access it very easily. It isn't. I represent a ward which, high deprivation, substance misuse is prolific, alcohol misuse is a real concern. I don't think my ward's any different to a lot across the county. But it is like a, it feels like a tsunami which is going to hit us eventually. It is a major problem. I fully understand the fact that actually, if you opened this service up, which was like a walking centre, et cetera, et cetera, you know, you'd need 10 times the amount of money to be able to fund it, et cetera. But I do think it's that much of an important issue. I think 10 years ago, we was talking about around mental health and about how we had need to be more open and transparent around mental health issues and access to services, et cetera, et cetera. And to me, this is exactly the same. And to me, this is exactly the same. I get really frustrated in terms of, you know, the amount of issues around substance misuse, and what hangs off that in terms of all the other antisocial activities, et cetera, and yet we still struggle to be able to signpost people to services in an appropriate, timely way. And I know that actually, you know, there will be a pathway. That pathway, I don't understand, and if I don't understand it, I can guarantee nine out of ten people living in the street wouldn't have a clue about how to access it. So for me, that's the most important thing, having a clear understanding in terms of what, how the pathway of signing post, signposting people into services is really important. For me specifically, in my particular ward, I know this is going to the exact, is that I would like regular feedback in terms of how many people in my particular area, my particular patch, are being signposted into services and in receipt of treatment, and what the outcomes of those, that treatment is. I'd welcome that. I think it's a really important service. I think, I just really get frustrated, it sounds a lot of money, five million pounds, I just feel as though we're scraping the surface. I kind of welcome other people's thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. It is, it is a specialist service, but it shouldn't be a discreet service, it should be embedded in all, it should be very visible within all other parts of, not just the NHS, but across our communities, and that is something that we are really conscious of, and with the new service are talking about a really kind of visible, accessible branding almost that's out there. We need to get, we need to be smart about almost marketing the service to different cohorts of people in our communities who will be attracted into the service based on different things, and who will be motivated and find themselves in a position to change their behaviour in very different ways as well. There is a real challenge around stigma still, it's a hugely stigmatised area of practice drug and alcohol treatment, and we are only going to be able to tackle that if we are more visible, I think, in the support, and the recovery stories as well, people being able to share the journey that they've been on to a point of recovery, and I think, so I think that is really vitally important with the new service and building that element of the visibility, the branding, the getting cleverer at how we market to different communities almost is really key. We've started some work under the current contract around things like hospital liaison. So we have staff now who are in the hospitals and can go and talk to people who've perhaps been admitted or who have come to A and E, so that we can start to build some of those connections and do more handholding, I suppose, in terms of that referral into the service. But we can do much more of that, and we can do it on a much bigger scale, and getting into general practice is going to be one of those things where we will need to, particularly, I think, for drinkers, particularly for, you know, kind of certain cohorts of drinkers, middle-class drinkers who are drinking, you know, a bottle of wine every day, a couple of bottles of wine every day, and it's kind of crept up on them and they're still holding down, you know, potentially a really good job, but still would need some support to cut back or to quit drinking. So that visibility, tackling that stigma, and making sure that we've got the pathways really well, really slick, and self-referral as well, you can self-refer into the service, making sure that that's really straightforward, really easy to do, are all key.
Okay, thank you. I've got Tracy then, Nikki.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I think everyone knows I'm sometimes quite challenging about this service. I think the scope, from what I've read, does seem a slight improvement from what we've got. I think kind of that development of the outreach team that references on page forty-one, I think absolutely, Lucy, like you've just said, that branding, the separation of the adult and young, and actually somehow we need to almost make it quite fashionable to get help to that kind of middle-class person, that it's only a bottle of wine every night type thing, and here we go. So absolutely, I think breaking that stigma down and the marketing and getting out there is very much the key. I completely and utterly agree with councillor Young, it is only scratching the surface. I think it's ridiculous by now that it references the alcohol-related issues and deaths and crime and everything like that actually costs, what was it, two hundred and sixty-four million, yet we're putting in five million into it. We should have a rehab centre in Lincolnshire by now, we absolutely should, and I would be interested to know, you know, was that considered as part of the scope, and if not, why not? Because we shouldn't be having to have people who are needing rehab having to go to Lincoln or, sorry, to Nottingham or wherever to actually go and do that. It does reference rehab on page eighty-six as part of the performance report, so I'm not sure exactly if this was part of the contract, but it mentions that we can have four hundred and sixteen bed stay days in relation to alcohol. If that's the case, if one person stays in rehab for a month, that means fourteen people in Lincolnshire under this contract get rehab, that surely can't be the case. I know it's rare from my area, I am aware of a case, but it is incredibly rare. So for me, it doesn't go far enough. For me, the family support, that new contract's been in place since November twenty-two, is it working? You know, what is good about it, what is bad about it, what have we used from that to actually scope the new service going forwards? It mentions on page forty, the support hub, it mentions the community-based support. Again, like my colleague has just spoken, I would like to know, what visits does that mean that my guys are going to get in South Holland, what's it actually going to mean for them? So all of that's really important. Then it also mentions that lots more professional staff are going to be recruited through this on page forty-one. We also know there's big challenges in regards to recruitment, so actually, how's our service going to look if that recruitment doesn't bring the fruit that it needs to, basically? What safeguards have we got in place within the contract to protect ourselves and deliver more still? Thank you.
Which one of you is taking the reply?
So I'll pick up the recruitment first as the last issue. So absolutely, there are real challenges in recruitment across the system. We have been pretty successful locally because we've had the supplemental grant funding for quite, well, for a couple of years now, and within that, there was a lot of staffing posts, specialist posts that would work with particular groups of service users, and we have been, we have been successful in recruiting to a large number of those vacancies. There are still vacancies out there, and it will take time to build up the expertise, and obviously, many of the people who have been recruited in need training as well, so it's not, it's not a quick fix, but it should mean that by the time we come to launching the new contract within Lincolnshire, we've got a good body of individuals who are trained as specialists to support people with substance misuse treatment and recovery, to support women, to support younger people. So that's kind of around the recruitment.
Can I, yeah, just about the recruitment. Should is great, lovely, but what actually safeguards have we got to protect ourselves within kind of the contract that Carl's out there procuring for at the minute? You know, so we really have got something in place.
Yeah, absolutely. So within the approach that we're taking, Carl?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that the contract sets clear expectations for delivery by the provider. Now, obviously, they need the resources to be able to deliver the services in accordance with the specification that they are contractually obliged to deliver. It will rely heavily on the staff, as Lucy said, there will be a staff cohort that will be subject to transfer if the incumbent isn't successful, which should provide a good baseline for the resources necessary to deliver effectively. In the event that the provider isn't able to recruit or to recruit the staff it needs at the outset, we will have to work with them to understand and work through solutions to that. The staff, the service is heavily reliant on staff, though, and recruitment dependent on sufficient funding, that will be determined through the tender process. So provider will, providers with commitments as to delivery methodology, including staff resources and associated risk mitigation.
And just to add on the recruitment and training, there is a national training framework that we have now, so we, we've got that in place, which is very helpful for making sure that the staff we have have the right training to do the job, which is a specialist, specialist job. I'll just hand over to Simon to touch base on a couple of them.
Yeah, on the, you mentioned around the bed places that we've got, the four hundred and sixteen days, that is for residential detox. So it's purely for detox, not for residential rehabilitation. For residential rehabilitation, we have a separate budget that's partly built into the current contract, but also supplemented from the grant funding that we're getting. And at the moment, we're using primarily rehab in Scarborough, which is actually working really, really well, and giving us some really, really good results. Sorry? For, for, it's very much dependent on individual circumstances, so it's needs-led. You know, there is no definitive budget as such, it's, if somebody needs to go for six weeks, they go for six weeks, if they need to go for twelve weeks, they go for twelve weeks. So it's very much needs-led.
Okay. Okay, right, well, just bear in mind, we'll get to the point quick and ask quick questions and get a quick reply. Nikki, you are up next.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll do my best to be very quick. Lucy and Carl, thank you very much. You've touched on some of the question that I'm going to ask you, and I'd like you to just expand on it a bit more for me, and also, my colleagues have also touched on this, and clearly, it's a worry for people who are working in the divisions. But on page forty, point three, point four, and point three, point five, it says there's an opportunity to meet the needs of a wider demographic and specific population subgroups who are known to be underrepresented in substance misuse, which may touch on some of the comments that my colleagues have made. For example, young people, migrant populations, women and girls, and older drinkers. So I would ask you, please, if you can briefly, just expand on that, what do you mean by underrepresented? Tell me why we're having this problem still after such a long time, and it sounds like that the, it sounds like the change in your contracts is coming just at the right time, so you're going to get more, more out of it, and you're going to be able to change and make those adjustments. And then it says as well, just remind me, I know we've talked about this before in previous, in previous meetings, but just remind me, three point five, the service review explored greater Lincolnshire commissioning and procurement collaboration with North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire, and it was concluded that it's insufficient alignment at the moment for these areas. Just remind me why there is insufficient alignment, because actually, we're looking at Greater Lincolnshire, we need to look at Greater Lincolnshire to be able to provide services better right across the board. So just remind me again about this alignment that's not working. Thank you very much.
I'll do them in reverse order again. So in terms of Greater Lincolnshire, although we are close together geographically, the needs of the populations in North and North East Lincolnshire around substance misuse are quite different to the, some of the challenges that we have across Lincolnshire. And at the same time, I've talked about the national grant funding as if it's one pot of money, but it's many pots of money, and we're all in receipt of different pots of money, which makes it very difficult to provide one service across the whole geography. And what we are doing is working really closely together to learn from each other, to make sure that where we've identified good practice and things that work, that we align those across the three areas, so that our services start to look more similar potentially over time, if that's the right thing for the needs of our local people. So it's an ongoing conversation, and certainly, at a strategic level, when we talk about drug and alcohol, our strategic approach, the partners that we work with, albeit very diff, it's the same partners but different groups, so the police are different, the Integrated Care Board is different, all of that does add a level of complexity. So we are learning from each other and kind of aligning as much as we can, but at this moment in time, a joint commissioning exercise just didn't, didn't make sense for Lincolnshire. And then, just in terms of those specific groups and their needs, I think it's probably fair to say that for, for the last, you know, thirty, forty years, we've been developing the evidence base around what works in terms of drug and alcohol treatment, specialist treatment, and it's changed a lot over that time. The, the initial kind of models and how they were developed were a bit of a one-size-fits-all, and that has improved over time, but that one size has tended to be geared towards men, because more men would appear at services. It's tended to be more geared towards drug users because they often present with more complex, more pressing needs that require potentially pharmacological, so medication intervention. And over the last ten to fifteen years, that's started to change. We've recognised that, you know, that one-size-fits-all, and particularly, because of that history, there's a lot of stigma, as I've mentioned before, attached to services. Over the last ten to fifteen years, places have started to trial new approaches with particular cohorts of people. So, for example, older drinkers tend to be underrepresented in services. It's, perhaps it's something they're not hearing about often, it's just not, it doesn't, it's not attractive to them as an offer because they don't want to go into a service where they're going to be waiting in a waiting room with people who they don't feel are like them. So there is something about understanding for different groups of people. So we have our separate front door and a very different approach for children and young people. We're starting, over the last year, eighteen months, we've been piloting a new approach with women, which is again, much more about outreach and going to them, and understanding things like childcare complications that might make it really difficult to get into a service. So that's why we are now kind of, we're building on all that learning from elsewhere and our own, to basically, to expand what the service looks like in this new, new kind of contract.
As much as I heard all of that, actually, half it, I don't really sort of make sense of it. And my view is, if we are Greater Lincolnshire with public health, why, I know you dismissed it on little bits in terms of grant funding, I can relate to that bit, what I can't understand is, what's the difference between a North East drinking problem and a Lincolnshire drinking problem? At the end of the day, you're drinking too much, too often, is the sort of issue, and I didn't really understand that bit. I mean, I sort of sit here a bit because Public Health England has got, it's got a bit of a mess with this. I mean, to start with, how about just a simple thing, put calories on a bottle of wine? So actually, people start to understand what it is. And I mean, it's like, a bit more, I know that's nothing to do with us, but I think, I didn't really, I mean, I don't know about yourself, Nikki, if you really got to grips with actually why we didn't go countywide, as in, well, Greater Lincolnshire, not countywide because it's, that's a Lincolnshire, but I still didn't quite understand why, why not?
So there are, the current services across the three geographies are quite different in shape as well. So if I take, for example, the recovery service, in Lincolnshire, we have a recovery service which is led by Double Impact, which provides sort of, almost a bit of a, it's a service-led offer, they put on peer support groups and support activities for people who are in recovery. North Lincolnshire doesn't have a recovery service, and North East Lincolnshire has a recovery service which is based on a single building that was, that is their recovery community. They don't have an ongoing contract that's kind of provides, that provides that steer in terms of guidance, it's then all very much grassroots, and it works well because it's based in Grimsby, and the vast majority of their service users live in and around Grimsby. So just as one example, there are the sorts of challenges that we were finding when we looked to merge the contracts or to kind of, to go out for one service now, that we would end up, we were very concerned that we would destabilise elements that are working really well in Lincolnshire and in North East Lincolnshire particularly, without, without getting benefit for our local population in the short to medium term, which is why we're looking to keep working together so that we are in a stronger position in the future to potentially go down that route, but just for now, it wasn't the right time.
Personally, I think you could have put a bit more in the report on that, because here we are, working as Greater Lincolnshire with public health, and in effect, it's just been completely dismissed. And actually, if there's benefits on both sides, from a scrutiny point of view, we would like to see what the benefits are going on in with our colleagues to see, actually, it just gives us a bit of better flavour of actually benefits and disadvantages.
So we are, we are going out to market together with North and North East Lincolnshire for the sexual health service, one of the One of the other advantages is it means we can learn from how that works in terms of a collaboration for future work across public health. But the public health pilot itself is coming to an end over the summer, and so whilst we would have continued with this anyway, had it been the right thing to do, it feels like for now, the sensible thing is to learn from our experiences in sexual health around that joint commissioning work, and then continue to work with North and North East strategically for the future.
Okay, Andrew.
Thank you. Yes, my question's on page 42, and it's the Substance Misuse Family Support Service, and the amount of money that they're getting, £60,000, which I assume is for a year, so that's £1,153 a week. Well, what can you do for £1,100, you know, that's going to make any difference? It just seems like nothing. You know, Trevor mentioned earlier that £5 million is probably scraping the surface. Well, this isn't even touching the surface. If it's only £1,100 a week for the whole county, what can you do for that? Thank you.
It's not. It's a simple answer, in the fact that that is from the public health budget, and we are supplementing that with additional grant funding. So the final budget that will go out will be in the region of £200,000.
But it doesn't say that anywhere, does it? Or have I missed it?
No, I don't think it does say that. So it's just got the financial contribution from the public health grant. What we haven't got in here is the breakdown of the financial contribution from the supplemental grant funding. So that is something we'll need to clarify. Thank you.
That really does look weird, and I wouldn't want that to go to the executive, because it looks like we're not bothered, and obviously, we are bothered. So if that could be amended, that would be very helpful, because that does make, it's still a drop in the ocean, but at least it's actually got to the ocean and not evaporated on the river halfway down, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, hi.
An issue, I think it was very interesting to listen to the debates about why not the Greater Lincolnshire, and why we are just doing it in Lincoln and not including North East or Greater Lincolnshire. I think one of the reasons, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Lucy, because it's your baby and it's your area of expertise, is the decision was made based on what, how can we achieve the best outcome? And sometimes, you achieve the best outcome if you do it locally and in a more focused and targeted, basically, the communities that you choose to deliver that service to before you launch it to the wider Greater Lincolnshire. Is it your understanding too?
Yes, that is, the thing that we were always holding most important in our mind is what's going to get the best outcome for the people of Lincolnshire. And from a substance misuse service perspective, it was to commission for Lincolnshire.
Just on that, though, because of the fact that what tends to happen is people jump across boundaries and borders, how many actually are coming from, say, North Lincolnshire to actually use the services that we've now laid on? Is that happening? I mean, because if they haven't got, say, rehab, then they'll perhaps think, well, just send them to Lincolnshire and pay the difference. I don't know. I mean, but we do know in a lot of our services, they go across borders.
So for substance misuse, we don't see that cross-border traffic. We support people that are resident and GP-registered in Lincolnshire.
Okay. So I've got Paul, Mike, and then Karen. Paul?
Thank you, Chairman. Be fairly brief, just picking up on a few bits. The numbers, one in three will be affected by some of this, which is a quarter of a million. 3,200 adults, 200 children, the numbers don't stack, so it's about 3%, 4% population. So for me, I'm uncomfortable. A gentleman over there said, we're running open book. That would seem to me that it's preferred supplier, because that's what you do with, you work with your suppliers, develop a process. So I'm a little bit confused about what's going on there. It's been drugs and alcohol for a while, it was spit off for quite a while as well, but we need to all believe that it's actually addictive behaviour. You know, it could be gambling, it could be anything. And alcohol's quite serious, because if somebody's got a dependency, somebody stops it, you die. If it's Class A drugs, you're going to be uncomfortable but not necessarily die. So that's why that's important. Pathways, we had a bit on safeguarding earlier, working with all these people. For me, all of those routes need to be open for this, and people need to know what the pathways are. Digital routes haven't been mentioned at all, this is something that really ought to be done. And all of this ought to have been done on a needs assessment, and I can't find that in the document either. So there are just a few bits skirting through. Thanks, Chairman.
Okay.
So the work that we've done has included the joint strategic, the results of the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, which has a specific chapter on drug and alcohol use. So it is all underpinned by our understanding of local need in terms of drugs and a whole range of substances that people use. We, I agree that a broader kind of approach around addictive behaviours is helpful and is needed, because the treatment is the same. In terms of support for gambling, there is, at the moment, growth in terms of NHS gambling clinics, which are funded nationally. So last week, and so before last week, our nearest clinic was in Leeds, a new one was launched last week in Derby, which I appreciate is not that far away, it's to cover the entire East Midlands, but there is a growth in support for addictive gambling, and there's often a lot of interrelationship between alcohol or drug use and gambling. So that's, it's really important that we do consider that, and we are with you, do screen for gambling-related harms, and we'll signpost to local services that are available and support people if it kind of comes up as part of their treatment for drugs or alcohol. In terms of, and just finally, I'll pick up on the, in terms of one in three, so one in three adults are affected by a relative's alcohol use. That's any alcohol use. So in Lincolnshire, we know that one in five people drink above the National Guide, the lower-risk drinking guidelines, one in six people binge-drink. So being affected by a relative's alcohol use, it doesn't mean that that relative has kind of dependent behaviour, it has a dependency on alcohol, but rather that they are drinking in a way that is causing some harm, distress, could be financial challenges, challenges around the home. So there's a whole range of different ways that people might experience that harm, which is why it ends up being so high at the one in three. And I'll just hand over to Carl to pick up the other point.
The reference to open book is a requirement for transparency in the actual expenditure incurred in delivering the service, so that we can, A, ensure that we understand fully how our investment in the service is being utilised, and ensure there's checks and balances as well in the event of under or over expenditure. If the expenditure is under what was predicted at the outset, then we've got a gain-share mechanism to help address that and ensure that the actual cost of the service is representative of the service delivery. And were it to be the other way, we would have an opportunity to have a review and consideration of whether additional funding needed to be provided to make sure the service remains sustainable.
Quite understand what open book is. We've been doing it in commercial work for 20-odd years, and that, working with people, you actually develop the service that you're working with, so quite happy with that. Some of the stats around older people drinking and cirrhosis and other bits were horrific 12 years ago. I dread to think what they are now. But, thank you.
I think the trouble is, when you use figures like one in three, it sounds shockingly bad, but when one in two are actually having a laugh, and their heart rate's much better, and every other aspect of their life is better, you know, the extreme is where we need to be. And I think, you know, many of us have a drink in an evening, and perhaps I would dread to think what the percentage is of people that actually have a drink in an evening. And you could say, well, I've done it, perhaps I've had a drink every night for the last, I've got an issue. Don't think I have. But I think, you know, and if you then read the next doctor's report, it actually says it's good to have a drink, because actually, the body relaxes and actually de-stresses. It's the, hmm? Yeah. But it is, I think if we don't watch it, we bring all the figures in, and it just, it waters it down. And in here, you've got some tremendous stuff, some great work, but it's actually getting lost in all the other bits that really don't need to be in there. And I think, you know, in everything we're hearing, there is brilliantness, and it's a shame that it gets lost. And that was, I think, the sort of thread that I was sort of picking up, that we're sort of putting so many other figures in that don't need to be in there. And I think, you know, the focus is right. Right, Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. It's on page 36, paragraphs 1.5. You put a few figures in there, percentages. What would help us is if you could identify the approximate numbers that you're talking about. We would then obviously appreciate how big or small the problem is, because it's been mentioned by a few colleagues, you know, that we've got this problem, but how big a problem is it? We can all theorise about it, but if we could have some actual figures. And similarly, going further on, on page 45, about the contract, and it was mentioned earlier by one of your colleagues, about the qualified staff that are needed for the contract to be agreed. Do we have any checks within the contract, that as we progress through the contract, that we're still getting the same number of qualified staff? I know you're saying you're trying to recruit additional staff, but are we regularly updated as part of the terms of the contract? Thank you.
I'll pick up the first question and then hand over to Carl. So around about 7,000 people in Lincolnshire are dependent on alcohol, is our best estimate, and it is an estimate, because it's very difficult to know exactly how many people. And probably just under 4,000 are dependent on opiates or crack cocaine, just two examples, but two of the examples that are the vast majority of service users. The reason why it's so important to understand how many people in the population are drinking above low-risk guidelines is because that has a huge impact on our overall health, on heart disease, on cancer, on road traffic accidents. And why it's so important to know about things like binge-drinking is because that has a huge impact on crime and safety, on people getting into accidents, getting into fights out on the streets, domestic abuse. So although the number of people who are dependent drinking, we could say, is the kind of nitty-gritty, if you like, of the people that are being supported by our service, the more people who are drinking at high levels, and the more people who are binge-drinking, the more culturally acceptable it becomes to drink at that higher level, and the more people will become dependent in the future. So it's a core part of our prevention work, that we do encourage people as much as possible to understand the harms of even what might seem to most people like low-level drinking, because actually, that does build up over time, and it does have a negative impact on our health, and it has a negative impact on family as well. And that's pretty well evidenced. So it is recognising it's important to make sure that those key figures are front and centre, that broader picture, and tackling some of the wider societal challenges around drinking is equally important also for people's recovery, because if you, you know, you manage to quit drinking, it's really difficult to quit drinking or to quit drugs, and then you go back out into society, and everywhere you turn, there's alcohol on billboards in shops and things like that. So it is a real challenge for us. I'll stop there and hand over to Carl.
Thanks. So in relation to the query on monitoring of staffing, numbers and qualifications, that is a key requirement of the contract reporting regime, and something that's monitored through contract management meetings on a quarterly basis. So yes, that is and will remain a visible issue throughout the duration of the contract.
Thank you very much. Going back to your questions there about the numbers, we don't seem to have emphasised enough the financial implications regarding as also the health problem, because if people are, you know, with gambling, or with tobacco, or with drink and drugs, they spend more and more money on it, therefore, there's insufficient money then to take care of their family possibly, or young people, as you say, sometimes at a weekend, binge-drinking, and the impact that has on themselves and their families doesn't always get out to the public. We have an occasional splash in the news when a particular incident happens, but it doesn't seem to be a constant reminder to people how the adverse effect it can be on that initial impact of too much drinking, but certainly, there never seems to be enough a reminder of the financial impact. Thank you.
Just on some of what you've just said there, we just have to remember, financial. The reality is, the 18-year-olds today can't drink in pubs afford to like we did in our day. And so we, well, I say we, the youth, adapt. They connect, they go home, and actually, where we would actually drink only beer, they actually buy a bottle of vodka and get stuck in. And actually, the world evolves. The more you drive something behind, like cannabis, the more it happens in the free market. And actually, vapes, the new kid, oh, public health, let's, everyone get on to vape. Now we've got a vape tsunami happening, and they reckon that the new vape that's coming in, why should anybody want to get hooked on nicotine in the first place? It's hard enough to kick it when you smoke, and yet you can vape and stick nicotine all in it, and it's actually all fine. It's an addiction. And here we are, just waved the white flag and said, get vaping. And now we're saying, oh, I think we've got a problem, which actually perhaps should be in here, starting to be, because, you know, it is another issue that's coming through. And I don't know how bad it is, but I have seen the reports this week on TV, and it seems to be everywhere. Right, I've got Karen, and then, first off.
Thanks, Chair. I wasn't going to say too much, because I'm aware of how long these meetings go on for, but just some very brief comments. I was a bit perturbed to see the caseload that each worker's got is high, it's 60-plus. That's a lot of cases for someone to have to deal with. The comments about addictive behaviour, I completely agree. I'm always quite surprised that nobody ever includes cigarettes in addictive behaviour as well, because, you know, if you saw the amount of damage that they do, and the people that come into hospitals, they're just as bad, but that's another story. I'm really pleased about the comments about outreach work. I think I got them all. There's a bit here as well, 2.4 on page 37, that says the service is flexible, goes across many locations, local hubs, community centres. I'm glad about that. I wouldn't have minded, I might have missed it, I'm sorry if I did, but known a little bit more even outside of this meeting about how that works, because by the time people get to hospital, they're well down the road of that addiction. And as I say, without revealing too much, I'm the child of a parent that had cirrhosis and ultimately died of it, so I've seen all this. I was a teenager, and I know that the impact that it has on a family, and by the time they get to hospital, it is too late to change anything, really, you're just mitigating. But I do think that things have changed a huge amount. There was no support for my dad, and he was really quite ill. I do think as well, I think it's pointless telling people about how many units there are, et cetera, et cetera. Do it, but honestly, people who are addicted, they don't care. They just drink anyway. And that goes the same, you know, my patch as a county councillor, drugs is a significant problem, it's presenting a challenge. And just finally, the bit, 1.5 on page 36, just to remember that every pound spent saves £4 in terms of all kinds of other services that we have to provide. So this should be seen as an investment, not something that's, you know, an expense that we can do without. But thank you for your report, and thank you for your work. Thank you.
How actually, going forward, can you justify £1 spent saves £4? Are you, it would be good to see that measurement in there as a success and start to drive it down there?
So it's, it's very challenging because so much of those costs, um, occur across the whole system, but it's one of the things that we, that they're working on nationally and obviously locally kind of following suit around understanding the, the benefits as we, um, as we grow our substance misuse treatment and recovery service to understand what the impacts are on those other services across the system where we would expect to see improvements in outcomes or reductions in harm. So there are some where it's really easy to track. Um, interestingly, so, um, hospital admissions for alcoholic liver disease are quite responsive to changes in drinking patterns in a population. So there are things like that which we would expect to see changes in quite quickly. And there are other things which obviously will take, take more time, um, to, to come through. Um, and all of this is underpinned by changes in population levels of drinking. So it's interesting, mentioned earlier around, uh, young people, actually one in four young people doesn't drink alcohol. A, a population level across all adults, one in nine drink alcohol. So we've seen a huge generational shift in young people today just turning away from alcohol full stop, which is really interesting to see. And obviously understanding how that plays out alongside all the other changes that we make in the services we put in place and our prevention work, um, is really important, but also a real challenge.
Okay. The only other thing which, having read this report, which I would question, which was about subsidence, food is a substance. Food, eating too much leads to obesity. And actually obesity, I think as a problem for the country is far greater than actually what we're perhaps talking about in terms of drugs and alcohol. And actually, if you look at the children, if you actually put weight on and, and your child puts weight on, in some sense, it becomes, you could say, if they go too far, it's abuse. You know, and actually you need to perhaps, when you look at children's services, start to look, I know we haven't got food in and you, you know, perhaps shouldn't put food in, but there's one thing for sure, no one got obese by not eating. And I think that it's another issue that public health needs to address. And I would say that in some sense it is a substance, it is a substance, food is a substance and it is being misused on a scale that has now got fifty percent obesity. And public health actually needs to address that and it could be linked in on things like this because we have one new Lincolnshire and tie it in a bit more. But, you know, if you want to see money saved, poof, look in that area. How many carers do you need to start looking after people with obesity and, and the services that can go with it? You know, it's quite frightening. At least Wales is making a start. But, uh, other than that, it's, I think, my, I think, right, is it important? I mean, I just think we're gonna-
Chair, yeah, I, I feel any points that people want to raise is important.
Come for it because we need to get on to the executive and what we're gonna say.
Yeah, absolutely. It's just a quick point. I, I would actually like to applaud Lucy and Simon for putting the figures in there. Um, I think it's a reality that we all need to accept that, that they are stark figures, that one in three people are affected by a relative's alcohol use. Um, I would say seven thousand is probably quite conservative i- in the county, if I'm perfectly honest. Um, and I think we've got to not, uh, compare and, and think that those that have a drink eat sort of most nights and things like that. I think we need to be really careful not to try to water down and underplay these figures. Um, this is a service that is a problem for untold problems that it can bring. And I think it's a service that we need to be being prepared to be putting more money into, um, over the period of time. Um, and for me, the figures, the more in there, the better. Um, and I think it's really crucial and I think we need to be very careful about any underplaying of them. Um, and that's all my point I'd like to raise. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, well, first off, do we agree with the recommendations? Can I just have a vote, a proposer and a seconder on that? So although proposed, Tracy, seconded, Nikki, all in favour. So, right. Okay, so to the executive, Simon, or have you made any suggestions? I think first off that we do appreciate that there's some great work gone into this. Um, and I think that it is a long document and I think there are bits that could have been more, bit more highlighted on some of the greater pieces and perhaps streamlined on some of the other bits, but the greater Lincolnshire bit, I've, I've put down, right, or Simon, are you gonna say? Have you got anything down? Right. The greater Lincolnshire element, I think, was a bit of a shame that it wasn't sort of some perhaps more tied in. That might be my opinion, but the bit more sort of explanation or something. Financials, I'd made a note on, perhaps tidied up a bit sharper, maybe, Paul, whoever. What would you agree? Comments or not comments to the executive?
Well, I think the point I made about the family support needs clarifying because that does look like we're, we're only putting that small amount in when it, when actually it's a lot more.
Numbers, well, it makes no difference because it's not really irrelevant, but as in make them, but it should make them a bit sort of stand out at the beginning. I think there is a bit of, the numbers thing seems to come up a bit in papers, actually. We perhaps need to just have a, a bit more punchier numbers at the beginning that are easier to follow or something. Karen?
I support what Tracy said and I think we need to make a comment to say that committee, uh, note, note the, um, significant impact that it's having on our communities.
And maybe also what Trevor said at the beginning, uh, when Trevor said this is still only scratching the surface. But I think we all agree with that. That's probably the most important thing that's been said, actually. And Trevor did start the debate. I think that is probably what we would all agree with, that it's such a big problem whilst however much we do and however good we are, we're only scratching the surface.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Chair. And I think, you know, we need to look at, sorry, it's me, we need to look at, uh, more funding. I mean, it looks like we've been dealing with this for a long, long time and it's grown bigger and bigger and these guys are trying to make the best of what they've got and they're scratching at money from all over the place. And, you know, is it a question of Lincolnshire being yet again the poor relation and we're not getting what we need to provide the service that we want and we know is an issue? So I think we need to be bold enough actually to say that, if you can find the right words. Thank you.
I think, Chairman, we'd be also remiss if we didn't mention the pathways and people knowing how to get into the service. Uh, and I, I didn't really get an answer on the digital routes, but the digital routes would actually provide a pathway in there. Because what you've got to realise is when somebody actually makes the decision that they need help, if they've got to wait a long time, that might be very crucial for them. Thank you.
One last one, the bit about this being an investment in people, you know, every pound, whether it's four pound, whatever it is, it's still, you know, it's an investment in people.
I think the good thing is we all agree on everything, which is quite unusual, isn't it? I don't think there's any debate about, about it. We all agree on it.
No, and I suppose the reality is we need, it, the problem is we, we've now got where we are, where it's going to the executive. So in a sense, what we need is really the executive to get some good P, KPIs to really try and bury down this benefit so that actually it, so it instigates more investment if it's actually highlighted better and what's working. And I think that's perhaps a bit of a key element that if you want more investment in it, we've got to highlight it better and highlight the reward. And I think that's maybe the bit that's sort of missing in the sort of, the mix or it moves on to the next part. Right, have you got that all down? Do you want to refresh that back or while you're here, just to double check?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Well, I've, I've got the, obviously the support, we've got, um, a, a view that there's been a lot of preparatory work in developing the, the proposed two lots for the, uh, for the service. Uh, there's a point about the clarification of the, the fact that the sixty thousand is for the substance, for the family support service is not actually what will be spent on that service. So that the committee has received assurance that it will be higher than that. Um, the, I think the, the next point is that the, the figures are, that this provide, that, that the actual problem has a significant impact on communities and the size of the problem is, is one that the, the service is grappling to deal with, this scratching the surface element. Uh, there was a reference to maybe whether the funding, uh, was sufficient for the service, but I, I guess that in a sense is going to be covered off by, that's the funding that is available in the public health grant, but it's not for me to answer the, the points that the committee makes. Um, highlighting the, uh, pathways into the service, so self-referral and also, uh, the possibility of digital routes and the importance that it is, uh, investment represents an investment in, in people. And I think one of the earlier points that, uh, councillor Carter said was, uh, about the fact that in terms of dependency, the figure of, uh, seven thousand may be an underestimate. Um, but th- th- those are the key points that I've picked up.
Okay, just add the word signposting to po-
Yeah, signposting.
As well as pathways. Um, what was the other figure? You seven thousand for alcohol and what was it, three thousand for-
Yeah, so probably just under four thousand, uh, opiate, uh, and, uh, crack, oh, sorry, opiate or crack cocaine users.
That really should just be all branded under class A, yeah?
No, well, it doesn't include lots of class A drugs. It's just people who, effectively it's people who are in injecting or smoking, uh, certain drugs, but it doesn't include, for example, powder cocaine, which obviously there will be a large number of users of, of powder cocaine.
Right.
So it, and it doesn't include things like ecstasy either. So it is, it is, I appreciate it's technical, um, but we could always put a description afterwards if we want to include it.
Well, I think, no, I mean, my, one of my views is, is that your number one issue in a community is heroin, needles left all over the place and the impact that that has is perhaps greater than a bunch of people sat in a house sort of getting high on cocaine. But which one has more impact on a community? And certainly I think if you're living in an area where you've got heroin users all around you, it must be frightening.
Mister Chairman, could I just, um, come back to what Simon was saying? And I think the first point we make in that list, which Simon mentioned later, was the one that Trevor made. I know we keep coming back to it. I think we should say first of all that however much we do, this is only scratching the surface and I think that needs to be first because that's really been the tone of the whole debate, I think.
And I suppose the final recommendation is to get good KPIs and really prove the benefit so that actually you could attract more funding. Is to summarise it up going forward?
Chair, I do think it's important to make that point though as well about this is about investing in people. This isn't just, oh, we'll chuck as much money as we can at it. We're actually getting, making savings and getting something back for it, so.
Tracy?
What about the location of the rehab? I know, uh, Simon said Scarborough's working well, um, but Scarborough's a long way.
Well, we, we, but there are, there are elements of compromise and we have to accept that, but, uh, right, okay. So we'll let, uh, that, I think that's concluded that item, which has, uh, been quite a point of debate, but there is an element of making sure, and I think this is what the committee has done well, is it's not about tokenism, it's about actually seeing results. So, uh, thank you very much. Right, item seven. Adult care and community wellbeing, financial position twenty twenty-three, well, twenty-two to twenty, twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Um, this is a good news story, so, uh, we shouldn't be too long debating on a good news story, perhaps.
Now, you've just jinxed that now, haven't you? Morning, everybody. Um, it, it is a good news story. Um, for, for a further year, adult care has delivered within its resources available. We reported a seven hundred and fifteen thousand pound underspend across the directorate. Uh, top of page sixty-eight shows, um, the, uh, financial performance across each of our areas. Um, there is one area that you will notice does have an overspend, um, for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that was driven by the increase in residential care during twenty-two, three, particularly at the beginning of the year in the short term, um, residential care. You can see also a bit later down that same paragraph, halfway down the page, there was a forecast for the demand to continue into twenty-three, twenty-four. But I'm pleased to say with the continuation of the reaberman service, the decision that we were to continue with the active recovery beds and the use of the discharge fund, which I'll come on to in a moment, early indications, we are only at the end of quarter one, is that we are living within our financial allocation for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, specialist adult services saw continued growth in demand for mental health care coupled with increases in the unit costs of care, which you've had reports on particularly in, to this, um, uh, meeting in February earlier this year. Um, but as you recall, we did plan for that increase and we put additional funding, um, in. We were forecasting a one point one million need, again with the actions in that area. We actually needed three hundred thousand with the work that we did through the rates. So, um, really good work there across the, um, adult specialty services. Public health continued to maximise its grant income, is quite an underspend on, on the public health area. That is predominantly due to, uh, the lower than demand, um, areas, the volume-based services, particularly health checks and sexual health services. Um, but as you see, um, saw when the sexual health report came, you saw what we were intending to do with that service and we are seeing those recover, uh, each year as, as we progress beyond the COVID nineteen levels. Better Care Fund, twenty-two, twenty-three for, um, for the Better Care Fund was a continued rollover. We are now into a brand new Better Care Fund for twenty-three, twenty-four and that report was submitted, um, yesterday. The largest change we saw in the BCF during twenty-two, three was the, um, discharge funding that we, uh, had two areas supporting predominantly from ours, which was the active recovery service. And we passported one point three million through to our adult social care workforce to help them with recruitment and retention initiatives. And as you can see halfway down page sixty-nine, really good outcomes from our providers in what they were able to utilise that funding for. We didn't want to create a cliff edge, so what we did was pull forward the national living wage that came in from April twenty twenty-three. Um, and of course now in the rates that we approved in February, we've now continued with that level of funding into our provider market. So what we used the discharge funding for was on the back of those discharge, bringing that, that, that level for, uh, forward. And you can see the, the impact that had. We did spend the public health grant in its entirety in twenty-two, twenty-three. The new grant funding that we received, quite significant values in twenty-two, twenty-three, was the Ukraine funding to support those people, um, who did, resided in, um, the UK, both for those individuals, the services we delivered, but also for those families who very generously opened up their homes to support those individuals. Um, the money that we have received does alter, um, and it is for the full three years that they have that, that right to remain. So all in all, um, really good year for adult care from the financial perspective. We continue to have our medium-term financial plan in place, which always, um, supports the current year we're in and looks four years forward. Um, and as we are only in quarter one for twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, we are forecasting balance again within this financial year. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions? Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the Better Care Fund, uh, really pleased to see that, you know, there's more care workers employed. I just assume we're still actively recruiting through that idiom. Um, I wonder whether we were targeting any of the colleges with nursing care or something like that, where people might not attain higher qualifications but would be suitable candidates through the, the care area? Thank you.
Who's coming back on that?
If it's okay, could you please repeat the question, councillor Clark?
Yeah, I noticed that the extra, uh, care, care workers taken on, two hundred and ninety-eight. Uh, then going on to getting more people actively in, enrolled. Um, I wondered whether- I wondered whether through the colleges, people that were doing other works, maybe or even a university trying to do nursing, if they were unable to meet the criteria there, would they be suitable candidates to try and get them in the care system?
I am meeting with the providers, we're talking about the providers, the home care providers market, recruitment, yes. So I am meeting with the providers tomorrow and also in two weeks' time. And I will mention it and ask them if it's something they have been considering in order to improve their retention and recruiting to the vacancies. And I'm happy to send you an email with that. Come, thank you.
Okay, Trevor?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Pam, I think reading the report, it demonstrates good financial management and you should be thankful of that. I think you do a really good job in terms of achieving that. You've done it over a number of years and that, for me, that kind of raises, I'm torn between the thought in terms of actually the savings which we achieve or are we meeting maybe demand or not? And when we, when we understand in terms of nine out of 10 people who try and access the service, either don't meet the criteria or the signposted out. So only, only one in 10 people actually go on to have a provided service or paid for service. I struggle with the fact that nine, nine out of 10 people don't meet that criteria in some way, shape or form. And I'm a big believer that actually, not those nine out of 10 people, they don't actually refer into services or put that referral in because they haven't got a need, clearly have got a need. So the question is, is that financially, we've got the ability to turn the tap on or turn it off financially. And we can do that in two ways. We can either, we can, we're either better at assessment and actually gatekeeping people out of services, which I'm not suggesting we are, but clearly that is a possibility. And I question whether that does happen on a national basis. Or we're getting far better in terms of assessment, meeting people's needs and achieving people's outcomes, and I would hope it's the latter. But it, I do struggle with a bit about nine out of people, nine out of 10 people trying to access the service and actually don't, don't meet that criteria in, in a roundabout way. And in a way, you know, are we better having a slightly overspent budget, meeting more people's needs than coming in with a, a budget which is, you know, demonstrates good financial sense, but, you know, how we, are we, there needs to be a balance, I suppose.
Yeah, I think that there's, there's two points for that for me. Previously, the underspend's been a lot higher for, for adult social care for a variety of reasons, predominantly non-recurring grant funding, which was the reasons why we're here at this, this time last year. I think in terms of the numbers that we're seeing, it's very much service dependent. And we did agree for the 23, 24 reporting, which will be the next report coming in for fi, from finances, this closes off last year, that we'll start to bring in some of the adult social care volume based metrics that attach with the finances. And there's, there's a graph on there, and I can send it round attached to the minutes wherever you would like, which basically does show overall, we are seeing on par with our East Midlands and national numbers. But until, you'd have to get into each of the services, very much like you've, you've done with substance misuse, very much like sexual health is to say, is to be able to answer your question of actually where is it best placed to see which number of people for, for what services and where does that investment lie? But overall, we can provide the AS, what's called the ASCFR volumes, which show exactly that we are on par across all services. We are actually slightly higher in the number of people placed in residential care, which is why we then, a few meetings back came, said actually our proposals for the capital investment we have is to increase in those housing options for, for extra care housing. So I think seeing it in the round, being able to compare it with some of the performance measures that, that Caroline will take you through, we need to be able to bring the finance report and the performance report a lot closer to help you make those decisions, which we did say we would do for 23, 24.
Back on that, because there is a real danger, danger, isn't there, that nationally, authorities have got the ability to actually just slowly turn that tap off. And there's a real danger there that actually, you know, we're not meeting need. And, and there's a great growing need around so, social need, isn't there, in, in many shapes and forms? And you're kind of wondering in terms of how that need is being met or not, or whether people just struggle along with life. And there's, it is a big struggle for some people in terms of actually that unmet need in various ways, so.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And whether that's through digital or different ways, because obviously there isn't the, a lot of workforce out there either, is there? So yeah, tying it all together in our investment programmes, the performance that we see is absolutely something that we need to see coming through these reports in three, four.
Okay, Sarah?
This was precisely the point that I, I am really concerned about. I think we've got two, two issues here. One is, are the officers doing a good job with our budget? And yes, clearly that's the case. And then the second one is a political one in essence, isn't it? That's outside of the remit of whether or not us, offices are skilled in doing the job that as councillors and as a council, we have given them to do. Are, is, are, are the citizens in our communities, in our divisions happy, content, are their needs being met across the board? Have we got enough in terms of preventative help? Have we helped to reinvigorate those community resources and activities that were lost through COVID? The, the, the whole raft of this is just so much vaster and broader than are we keeping, keeping hold of the finances? And I'm not sure how we, you know, I can see lots of nods around the room. And I think as councillors, each of us will be feeling inside deeply uneasy. And I feel uneasy. For example, I probably shouldn't use my professional hat here, but, you know, going round and meeting people who I am talking to via my funeral celebrancy business. And actually, the, the reality of people who for years and years and years have been outside services and isolated, they've been bereaved multiple times, some of these people, and they have never picked themselves up from the isolation of COVID. And I don't know if we know the scale of the unmet need here in this room now. And I don't, I don't have an answer, but all I know is that we are sat on a really profound question. And it's a separate one to are we keeping in budget? Because we clearly are, and that's to be commended. But are we meeting our, and it's one of the reasons I feel so disempowered as a councillor? Because I don't know that we're doing that. And it really grates.
Thank you councillor Parkin and councillor Young. Social work practice and occupational therapy practice, because we have statutory requirements the local authority has got in Lincolnshire, the rest of the local authorities in, in UK. And we have two types of statutory assessments. One is occupational therapy for equipment adaptation, social work, work, assessment and care management. Please be rest assured that the practice in Lincolnshire is not finance driven, is based on Care Act requirements, it's in line with a national guidance. And it is very, on, is not ethical to close the door to somebody who needs our support. And by law, we are obliged to provide the support to save money. One of the reasons the finance is so great in Lincolnshire is because we have been very flexible and creative of using grants. There are grants that is coming our way, yeah, and we use them very flexibly. We, we do a lot of partnership working, we engage with the communities. Is if, is one out of 10 end up having a service from us, it's not a bad thing. Because we don't want to have the culture of dependency and prescribing and institutionalism. We want to give people chance to stay as independent as possible. We have a well, wellbeing service, is managed by our public health colleagues, is brilliant service. And that nine people who are not ending up in residential home, nursing home or having a home care support, because their needs been met in the community. However, this is not a long term thing. We know they're going to come back to us. Yeah? So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
That is the thing that needs the challenge. I am confident that the people who come into the care of the county council are having their needs met. I am not sure that at that lower level, the signposting and support elsewhere is enough.
Thanks, Chair. I want to add my voice to what, to what Trevor and, and what Sarah have said as well. I think Sarah's absolutely hit the nail on the head. And it's no reflection, this is, this is a great report and the officers are keeping us within budget and that's fine. And I'm sure that everyone in social services is doing the very best they can with what they've got. But you asked a question earlier, you asked why are there so many suicides? We've just had a report on drug addiction and, and alcohol addiction. Why is it so rife? And it's, it's a different committee, but people know how passionate I am about citizens' advice funding. Only one in three people can access that free support because they don't have enough staff to answer the phones. People can't get to see GPs and I could tell you that for a fact, it's really difficult. So actually, I, I totally agree with what Sarah's said. And, you know, we are within budget, but we're not meeting the need. And come on, we all know that we're not. We all know that the state that this country's in, but we'd be here all morning if we talked about that. But I would like it noted for the record that I completely support the, the comments made by Trevor and Sarah, and I don't think that we're meeting the need. I'm sorry.
Before we get into the philosophy of life, there's, with a lot of things that we've spoken about with alcohol and drugs, actually what often is the trigger factor is happiness. How happy are people within, say, Lincolnshire? Because if actually people aren't happy, that's when they tend to start to go to drinking too much and other things, and that could be related to work and all the rest. I think the country as a whole has actually got really quite confused and it can't, it has to, you know, we've lost some of the basics of life of actually how you look after yourself, how you keep yourself entertained, don't you not? And this is the problem, everybody's relying on the health system for every single aspect now. You know, it's like obesity, oh, new wonder pill coming out, okay, great, but somebody's going to have to fund it, you know? And I go for a health check, oh, your cholesterol's a bit high, maybe have some statins. I don't want statins, I don't want that, thank you. I'll just cut back down a bit on my dairy. Without the cow, I'd be dead. I'd live off the cow. But, you know, and I think we have to be careful that we don't, and, and I agree, I understand what you're saying, but I think that society as a whole is actually, has to start to figure out. Because actually I see the youth want one thing and actually other people want another thing. Pension age could go up, do I want to work any longer? No, I don't, thanks. I'm quite happy retiring. The sooner I retire, as long as I've got some dosh with me, I'm all right. But if you haven't got dosh, I ain't retiring, that's for sure, I have to keep working. So it's life and society, but I think, and we've pressurised our point selves in this country, which is actually having an impact on every service that we provide. And, and unfortunately, we need leadership at the very top to start to change in effect our outlook on the way that we as individuals take responsibility for ourselves. Right, we all note that it's a good position to be in and we're not staring down the barrels of a massive loss. Tracy? No, I haven't got it, but I'll let you speak, come on.
Thank you. I, I agree. Yeah, again, it's been a KPI that I have harped on and on and on and on and on about, that it shouldn't just be that one in 10 are saying we need help. And I agree, we do not want dependency of, and I completely and utterly agree. But actually, for me, the key within that was we know they're going to come back, but actually, how, where are they when they come back to us? Have we allowed them to get, get worse within that, that actually we should have supported, supported first of all? But parking all of that, well done, Pam. Well done, everybody, within it, because actually you've sat here for two and a half hours to present finance and we've took it somewhere else. So well done you in all respects. In regards to the finance, the community and wellbeing underspend of, of the 1.4, it is significant. We, we obviously do want to increase those health checks and, and we was below and obviously, yes, you've said how we've got a plan of action in regards to the sexual health services. What about closer working with the district councils who have HRA for kind of the, the sheltered properties and things like that to actually do some of the health checks and go out to them? So I would love to see some closer working with the districts on some of that because trust me, between us, we can all spend that 1.4. Thank you.
Okay, Noe?
I give both my credit. Thank you, the team. But you talk about, I give for people to have any, be independent, but some people need hope and they cannot get hope, special in rural area, special in Mabesor. Last year, it was highest for people suicide themselves on the beach, very high is, you know, people are killed themselves. And I don't know how in Lincolnshire work when you are further to say, choose your survey to get the home care, what the card like, you say you don't read these criteria. But if the person who don't read the criteria, but the person who live with it, they're not being further to say, oh, you've got somebody living with you, they can look up there. But it's a long term. Because if you live in a Lincoln, Mabesor, you can walk to the shop. If you live in a village, you can't. And sometimes the care supporter, the, the home care come out, they're very short selection. They say, oh, yeah, you could have a six o'clock to come and give you breakfast. But you never get to get over sick if you're not that well. So somehow, because I used to work for home care in Yorkshire, so I know how a system work, but from the, I have no end of people contact me, we cannot get hold of the care worker, we cannot get a supporter because we not read the criteria like you say. And we have to pay so and so because we not must, so we have to pay. We don't have a phone to wait. So people like, you have a small budget, you know, for the pay on the bill and everything out, then you ask for this amount. And I think we can afford it. You know, you say you come on the, the budget, but some people can't afford to pay the home care, how that work? So that very concern to me because I have wanted to say, oh, it costs too much for me to send my husband to daycare, you know, so I got to give him a home because they can't afford it, how that work? So I, it really, really worrying. I give what say, what you say, Tracy, but you know, absolutely, we are sit in this room to try to make something better. And I hope somehow, I don't know, you know, I know it's all to do with paperwork, you got to score this point, that point and this point. Years and years ago, you don't score the point, you do with your kindness, you see. You have a fellow, you in hospital, you see your survey before you send home, you come out to look at your house, what you needed and you have a care packet. I think that miss understanding, I think it, it quite sad. You know, I mean, like, no, you are have to work till you're 60, 70, my husband's 69, he's still working. But, you know, people still live longer, nobody take independent. Look and think, it's a rural area, need supporting, not to the city, if you think that way. Okay, I know you get some from it, Lindsay, but you not leave people in the village, that's all. Thank you. Well done, you all. Well done, you all.
Okay. But no, it is, the challenge is rurality and, and it is a challenge. And, you know, I know when we look at services, you, you know, can't have everything in a rural area. But then hopefully, you know, sometimes we all have to move. And that's not often what people want to do either. So it's, it's sometimes we have to just accept that actually if we want to live where we do want to live, then we sometimes have more sparser services, unfortunately. Right, on that note, we'll go on to item eight, performance report, quarter four and year end. Thank you, Andrew. Have a good, safe journey. And welcome Caroline Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is going to be interesting. Okay. Um, so page, page seven.
Just be brief. You've done very well on most and the ones you haven't done well are the usual suspects.
Indeed. So yeah, page seventy one of your report. I think, you know, it's, it's putting it alongside the budgetary context as well does, does show that we are, you know, against the metrics that we are reporting against. And we are showing a predominantly positive picture. And just to kind of update that, in terms of the one measure that's exceeding its target in this report, this is actually around those people in receipt of long term support who've had their care package reviewed. Really positive because we've actually seen an increase from sixty one point nine percent in quarter three to ninety five point two percent in quarter four. This does always happen at year end. There's a lot of work that goes on around ensuring that our case management system recording is up to date. And as we do our submissions to central government around our data, we do a lot of data quality work. But it's so we know that our review data always does has that little bit of a catch up at the end of the year. But a really positive picture to show that people are having those, those needs reviewed on a regular basis. In terms of the three measures, sorry, in terms of the two of the measures that are, were exceeding last time, so in our quarter three report, and they're not exceeding now, they are still actually achieving their targets. And that's around permanent admissions to residential and nursing homes. Although we have seen the, the increase we anticipated, and Pam's already talked about that in terms of from the budget perspective. And it wasn't quite as high as we had targeted. And it was more, that's more of a prediction. We don't necessarily want to target lots of people in residential nursing home, but we predict that we were likely to get more in that quarter four. And we weren't quite at that level. Similarly, requests for support by our new clients, where the outcome was no support or support of a lower level, is still ninety three percent. So it's above the target. Sorry, the target was ninety three percent. It's still above at ninety four point four, but not exceeding because of the tolerance range we set. So again, positive performance, just, but just wanted to explain the differences between quarter three and quarter four. So as we are, are kind of short on time, just to quickly summarise. So there is that positive picture around adult frailty and long term conditions where people are receiving a direct payment. That's remained constant over the last twelve months. Our adult survey that we have undertaken in twenty twenty two remains consistent with eighty percent of people stating that services help them to have control over their daily lives. This is consistent with twenty twenty two. So we've seen no degradation in that measure. We're also seeing Libertas continuing to provide reablement services so that people can remain in their own home, which means that their outcome is no support or lower level of support. So really positive performance there. All three of our safeguarding measures are again performing well. We've, we've discussed them at length previously. And similarly, adults discharged from hospital who remain in their home ninety one days, again, remains positive at eighty three percent. Public health and community wellbeing, the NHS dental check does remain above target. It is positive. I know, again, we've talked about this at length and you'll see in the target set for next year, there are, those targets remain ambitious. And we are also, we are still seeing ourselves above England and East Midlands average. And also around a higher, scoring higher than our nearest neighbours. And obviously, work continues to improve the, the access to those NHS and take up of those, those checks. In terms of the people supported to improve their outcomings from following a wellbeing intervention. Again, really positive performance with ninety nine percent of, of people saying they've made improvements in their wellbeing following that service intervention. And similarly, we're seeing ninety six point three percent of our service users who are supported through accommodation by housing related support. You know, as that maintaining their accommodation. So again, really positive. Our emergency and urgent delivery of equipment continues to perform well at ninety eight percent. And carers again are having their reviews, having their needs reviewed on a regular basis at eighty percent. So in terms of the measures that aren't performing, those that are shown as the red cross within the report. Again, we've talked in previous meetings around these at length. Carers supported in the last twelve months. Again, you'll remember the discussions around the new carers contract. We're continuing all of the work that was previously outlined. And I believe there is a report coming back to you in December around how that new contract is progressing. It is a quite a change in terms of some of that delivery. And so in terms of the metrics that we report on, we are slightly behind where we would have anticipated being. And then segueing into our previous conversations, the other two measures. One is around the support for alcohol users and also for those quitting smoking. And again, in the report, there's a detailed narrative around each of the, of the, of those measures and the, 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 outlining the kind of, what's being done to address those concerns and that underperformance. Also in this report, there's the additional appendix A on page ninety one, which sets out the key performance indicators that we'll report on in twenty three, twenty four. You'll see that you've got quarter four data in the target and then also the, the target for the coming year for sort of twenty three, twenty four target. These, those targets been signed off by councillor Bowkit. You'll see we've got two new KPIs in the framework this year coming up. Both around, well, one around adults with a learning disability who live in their own home. And then the second measure is around the review of support for adults with a learning disability or a mental health need. So again, kind of looking at some, put a bit more emphasis on these specialist adult services. And we've also changed the definition of PI thirty one around the number of alcohol users that left specialist treatment to make sure aligning, we're aligning with the contract definition. So a quick whizz through, but I'll now hand over for any questions.
Okay, Trevor.
Thank you, Caroline. And just a very quick one. In the previous report, the finance report, it stated that there's a hundred and fifty additional admissions to residential care around frailty, which meant that it was the neighbors bank. When I read this report, I couldn't see how that aligned with the, the permanent admissions to residential nursing care for aged over sixty five. Have I just not read it right? I couldn't see how that, that hundred and fifty impacted. You would have thought that would have impacted on that, on that performance measure, when actually we was still below target by thirty two.
Yeah, and I think if Pam was here, she would say as well that those hundred and fifty may be at a higher cost than we would have anticipated. So I suppose in terms of the performance, you're looking at hard, yeah, you're looking at cold numbers. There is a reporting lag as well in some of the, sorry, recording lag in some of the data that goes on to our client system. Pam does have, obviously because we're paying for those providers, so her data is often more up to date. Those, one of the things I know Pam and I have talked at length about as well is that those admissions are costing more than would have been anticipated twelve months ago. Some are often, you know, more complex, you know, or though obviously the cost of that residential care has also increased. We are working to try and align some of this more. So it's, it's, there's a better alignment, but it is incredibly difficult when our client system does take time to be maintained. There's a, there's a separate system that pays the providers and we're doing some work with the, because they are actually with the same supplier. And we're doing some work about connecting those two systems to ensure that our performance reporting is as accurate and up to date as our finance reporting. Finance does tend to be, you know, because we're paying them, so they'll soon jump off or down if, if we're not paying them. So that's where some of that misalignment comes.
Okay, Tracy.
Thank you. Just a quick one, seventy six. The target got reduced from ninety five percent to eighty percent in quarter four, twenty twenty one. And actually, it's still in the list for the new reports for this coming year, still at the eighty percent. I guess, why? Why aren't we shifting back the other way up? And I've just got two more comments, so shall I run and, yeah? On page seventy nine and eighty, I see those as quite conflicting. Because on seventy nine, we're saying ninety six point four percent of people said, yes, after your safeguarding inquiry, you achieved the desired outcome, which is fabulous. But then we look at one, six, three PI and we actually only asked eighty six percent of people what outcomes they wanted. So one, one, six PI sort of looks better than the reality because it's only ninety six percent of eighty five percent people in the first place. So I kind of think a bit of a possible tidy up of that one. In regards to the actual figures, um, one, two, three on, on page ninety one, I think that target should be going back up again, rather than the ninety odd percent. PI one, two, two, I think we all collectively really don't like that PI. We probably won't revisit that. But actually, should we be doing it from age eighteen? So we actually are at least benchmarking against other councils. And PI thirty one on page ninety two, why are we setting the target so low? Again, we've been talking alcohol all morning. Like this quarter, we've done two hundred and forty people, yet we're setting a target of two hundred and thirty. Now, for me, that target is, is, is way too low. I think showing it as a percentage is really important as well. Because obviously, users are going to be going up. So we can't just get caught up in a figure. I think both need to be displayed and that's it. Thank you.
In terms of the adult care survey, I think the, the eighty percent is, when you look at the national, what's the national average is seventy six percent. It's, it's kind of trying to be that little bit stretching beyond the national. And an element of being realistic about that in terms of setting that at eighty percent, I think is, is what I would say on that one. Safeguarding measures, I think it's a fair point. We can just look at the wording. So it's of those who were asked their outcomes, you know, were they achieved? And I, I will defer on the, on the alcohol targeting and hope Lucy can help.
Yeah, absolutely. We will absolutely be tracking both alongside a range of other measures. We are, we've kind of set that as a, as a minimum target, given the challenges that we are, we are going to face in the year ahead. Because we know we're recommissioning and that does impact on kind of service delivery. And that is our absolute minimum that we will accept. But we are, we know that the complexity of the clients going into the treatment service is increasing. And we know that a lot of people now are being seen with lower level needs. A lot of people are being seen within one year Lincolnshire. So they're kind of ahead of their target, if you like. But do appreciate that it is important to look at both the number and the percentage.
It's an interesting one, the alcohol, isn't it? Maybe, maybe you should have a bonus scheme attached somewhere that strikes it really high. And actually, they get a bit more money for doing it. But it's getting it into the right areas where the bonus would actually benefit. Well, that, that, that indicator should go up actually after the previous agenda item. Anyway, it should improve. So I think we'll be, won't be seeing that one back in a year's time, hopefully. None of them actually would be quite good. Right, any other questions? We're all happy. I know, dare I mention it because it'll come up in overview and someone will ask smoking. But at the end of the day, I think that there's only, you know, that's down to people to put themselves forward if they want the service. And I think things like, like the carers one is perhaps, you know, sometimes can be more important, making sure that they're actually are sorted. So brilliant, thank you very much for that then, Caroline. And right, over to Simon then, works programme.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, there are no confirmed changes to the work programme for the future meetings as set out on pages ninety six, ninety seven and ninety eight. So that, that work programme stands as it is currently. Thank you.
Brilliant, excellent. Anyone got anything pressing on potential work items that they want to raise? All good? Okay, I'll declare the meeting closed. Once, once you've, have you switched it off? Right, just I, I.